Okay, it's 6:00 PM. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Gilman?
Yes.
Here. Horn?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Underwood?
Here.
Kent?
Here. Okay, uh, next item is approval of the agenda. Do any of the commissioners wish to add anything to the agenda? There's a motion from Commissioner Horn, second by Commissioner Underwood to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And there's approved. Do any of the commissioners have any conflict of interest regarding any matters that are on the agenda? Hearing none. Public comment. Do any members of the public wish to make any comment at this time? Regarding any item. So if you could please step up, Kylie is going to read the rules and then after that, if you could please state your name and address.
Any person may make an advance appointment with the board regarding road commission topics for a regular or special meeting in accordance with the open meetings act. If an appointment is made, the topic will be an agenda item. The following applies to public comments. One, please state his or her name and address. Two, topic must be relevant to the road commission. Three, individuals are allowed to speak once for up to three minutes on a single topic, which may be extended by the chair. A group addressing the board requires a designated spokesperson who may speak up to 10 minutes and the board will not act on any item from the public that is not on the agenda.
Thank you. Please state your name and address. You have three.
Okay, thank you. My name is Kim Elliott. My address is 11940 Lassie Road, Williamsburg, Michigan. Uh, I'm here for two reasons. One, a friend of mine was not able to be here this evening, so she asked if I could read this letter. Dear neighbors, I am writing this letter on behalf of myself and my family. On the way of my family elsewhere cannot attend the summer 12th meeting. We live at 7692 Chris Road in Williamsburg. We do not have this, we have not had this house for a long time, but it's dear to us along with all that is run. When I got the news that a new proposal was being presented, I was disheartened. Scott George, I have assured myself and others that he would connect with us about the use of Arnold Road and the road access plans. I have yet to be contacted by him or any other representative from High Point. Seeing that the proposal came forward without conversation made me concerned. It made me concerned that those at High Point do not consider us as neighbors. They feel free, they do not want to be part of the community. I am relieved the proposal was dropped this time, but how many times does High Point intend to submit the abandonment of Arnold Road? And to tend to continue to show my support for uninstructed access to our public lands. Good neighbor, share and support, and I intend to continue to be a good neighbor and hope High Point and its representatives will choose to do the same. Signed, Kelly. Um, my public comment is, I always thought the agenda was going to include this Arnold Road topic. And then it wasn't. So my question is, and I know I can't speak to you directly, maybe address it. How do we know what's going to be on the agenda? Because the agenda doesn't come out like the day before, so we have to watch it all the time. It just seems tedious to do. My suggestion, so I would appreciate if it's planned out as advanced somehow. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments?
Um, my name is Charlie Davis and I live at 8500 Chris Grove. And uh, we live on one end, the uh, East End and Arnold Road on West End. And uh, I've enjoyed uh, for 15 years or so, walking back in there, uh, in Arnold Road area. And I've watched the construction of the golf course and so forth. And uh, they're not a good name in regards dumping crap on the road. Um, the old asphalt on the roads, there's a piece of concrete with um, direct memory wire that came out of, I'm assuming the, where the old cart uh, facility was to plug them in. It was up by that clubhouse that now is used by the LLC company. We ride our horses back in there. I've seen other people uh, ride their horses back in there when I've been walking. It's just an enjoyment. Joyable place to go and I would hate to see it ever get abandoned uh, in any way. I hope the public is still allowed to use it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to make a public comment on any topic?
Good evening, Brian Kelly, Acne Township. Um, first I want to thank you for the August meeting when this topic was on the agenda. Uh, your discussion was very thorough, very detailed, very considered, and I think uh, the chair's comment most of all summarized the issue when he spoke of the legal standard for abandonment, and that is abandonment must be in the interest of the public, not in the interest of the abutting landowners, and that that really captured it perfectly. And uh, so I was very, first time I ever uh, participated. I appreciated being able to do that via Zoom. Thank you. And I first recreated on this parcel in 1984 on my motorcycle. And in August, when I became aware of this issue, I spent a lot of time on the phone with different DNR officials and other people. And when I asked uh, the local office of the DNR, why would they support abandonment at this time? What's going on? And I never got a great answer. What I was told is, you know, this, and that, and the other, but I said, why now? What's changed? It's been here for decades. Nothing's changed. Is it the golf course? Oh, no, it's not the golf course. And I spoke with Mr. Craig Brunet, Director of Legislative and Regulatory Affairs. He was the signatory of the petition. And it was the same story from him. He wouldn't tell me why now, you know? And I knew there was a reason though, and I believe it related to the golf course. And this was pretty frustrating. I also was very familiar with the plans that had been passed, approved in Acne Township for the golf course. And it showed a road from Moore Road along the southern east-west, along the border of the golf course and the DNR course, running all the way to Arnold. And I asked him, is there a road there? And he says, no, no, there's no road there. That's just uh, something counties do. They plant roads along property boundaries. So it's kind of weird. Well, guess what? We flew a drone over the road. It is there. And after some more investigation, I determined the DNR was using this road. And they had obtained a written easement for this road. And I believe that that is why they supported abandonment of Arnold Road, is they have gotten this thing of value from the golf course at a quiet deal. And today I got that easement agreement and I put a copy on the table for each of you. And I virtually pointed it to the DNR. I don't blame the golf course for seeking this arrangement, but this was, you know, the definition for me is a backroom deal that included the public, contrary to the public interest. It literally is a deal that says, we get this permanent easement to use the golf course access road if Arnold Road is abandoned. And if Arnold Road is not abandoned, this easement deal will be terminated. And that's what it says. And I believe that I suspected this and I finally got the evidence, so now it's not conjecture. And uh, it's very concerning. And I actually was told today, well, a couple of days ago by DNR employee that easement doesn't exist anymore. I said, well, I liked it for you. And, and well, it doesn't exist of writing because it didn't happen. I think there's still an agreement, isn't there? So anyway, but we have it now, so that's water under the bridge. So, um, an email you had in your packet before it was pulled uh, from the DNR said that the DNR was neutral when they signed the original petition. And I don't believe this is a neutral position when you have entered into this agreement. Um, so I, I do know that that letter, that email, says that Arnold Road will always be open to public access. There may not be open to vehicle. They may change the road access. But uh, it's going to be open. You know, that's the latest, I think it was a December 30 email from the DNR. And I wonder why Mr. Josiak back in August didn't share this easement agreement with you and it was for transparency to put the cards on the table, but this would help. So I hope in the future the DNR will be as willing to meet with the public about this Arnold Road access as they were willing to meet with the golf course. Uh, because we certainly have a lot we'd like to discuss. We'd like to get this parcel changed from forestry logging to recreation that maybe improve this road access. So finally, I want to thank you all for acting transparently and in the public interest.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Normally it's kind of boring.
Go ahead. Please state your name and, and your address.
Three minutes. I have three minutes.
You can do it. Yeah.
My name is Chris Miowsky of uh, 7969 Bates Road, Williamsburg, Acne Township, Grand Traverse County. To begin with, again, as Brian stated, it's long overdue. I was unable to attend the other meeting in August, but I would like to thank you all for the entire board for your decision to deny the decision put forth in August of this year by the abutters to abandon the seasonal portion of Arnold Road south of Chris Acne Township. And by now, I think we all know that uh, this is a seasonal road that leads to state land in both Acne and Lake Water Townships. And I also appreciate your reasoning for this decision denying access to the state land from this location would not be in the interest of the public, but strictly to the petition. It has become apparent that there is work yet to be done. Second petition that was submitted and withdrawn. I am not sure where the DNR stands on all of this. According to Mr. Josiak's petitions, they are all in, they are all in or are. It appears there are a lot of questions about the DNR's knowledge or involvement. It also appears there is a lot going on related to the abandonment of the seasonal road. The citizens of Grand Traverse County, including the board, may or not be aware of between High Point and the DNR. As reflected in my correspondence to each of you on the board prior to the August meeting, I am also one of those horseback riders. We have 23 plus years, um, use this area, um, and access to the many miles of state land either by horse, on foot, snowshoe, mountain bike, or by snowmobile. Essentially, all of the outdoor activities this area promotes. From Michigan here, here in Michigan. I do know the original High Point was in operation long before I moved back to the area and operated with the seasonal road running through their operation for many years after closing the property sat vacant. To my knowledge during this time, there were no issues with the use of the seasonal road and private property that borders it for a short distance before ending its state land. When the land was purchased by the new owners, the seasonal public road existed within the property. It was nothing they were unaware of prior to the purchase. When I learned the golf course was under new management, I was actually excited to see that golf course was going to be rejuvenated and wishing it well in their new endeavor, not realizing that there appeared to be a plan from the beginning to seek abandonment of this section of Arnold Road, which is not in best interest of the public, but solely the golf course itself. The golf course is active for approximately five, six months out of the year, though those of us who use this access routinely use it 12 months out of the year. As it stands, we have the access to the state land via Arnold Road. Relinquishing it um, is a forever decision. What if the golf court doesn't make it? And here in beautiful Grand Traverse County, then what happens? We would forever have lost this access and mean so many of us truly enjoy and appreciate. Again, I appreciate your decision to deny the petition for all of the right reasons and I thank you for your continued service. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make?
My name is Vic McAllister, um, 5852 Highlander Drive, Kingville. This is concerning the abandonment of um, Sulkum Road, which I understand is on the agenda tonight. Um, my family had lived on this road for 13 years and we purchased this property so we could um, use the trail access to Summit City Road. And uh, you know, for snowmobiling, horseback driving, hiking, off-road vehicles, whatnot. I have some young guys that I mentor and um, gotten them quads and I take them on trail rides, um, so they can enjoy that kind of thing, get out of the city. Uh, we were told by the developer at the beginning of this uh, project that we'd be able to access Summit City Road through that same right of way. And we appreciated that, but uh, things are changing now. Um, and we respect their privacy and, and want them to feel safe and we appreciate that ourselves, you know, so we live on this nice quiet road and um, so we respected their property and nobody rides through their property unless I'm actually taking one of my friends in there to show some, some of the lots off and have them move nearby us. Um, I put together a petition that I um, believe you've seen, um, from all of the, well, 98% of the people on our road are in agreement. They would really like to appreciate the use of that trail to Summit City Road. Um, and I just put together a letter that uh, I think you've seen also, but um, solution to the problem would be instead of having one gate um, blocking off Sulkum Road and, and abandoning that road, um, they, the developer could put in three gates for all of the drives that come off of Sulkum Road and that would make everybody happy. Uh, we'd be able to still get through there and, and they have their safety and security. So appreciate your time.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Good evening. I'm Randy Nance. I'm the petitioner for the abandonment of Sulkum Road. A gentleman before me was just speaking about. I'm also the developer of Paradise Ranch, which is largest development in Paradise Township. And uh, I bought this property back in 2021. It was 240 acres that had been laying pretty much vacant. And it was used, I think mostly for recreational. I mean, a lot of people went in there. Uh, past owner, um, uh, Bill Klaus was, you know, pretty open. He let a lot of people in there. And so, you know, I think the community got it used to using that property, not just that, but also some of the right of ways, like up through Summit City Road. And then where Sulkum Road comes in off of Garfield, it comes in, and I don't know, it's about a quarter mile or whatever, but we have a turnaround there. So that's the main theme part of Sulkum Road. And when I bought it, the property, um, it really wasn't a vehicle access. I mean, you could get through there. I tried a couple of times. My truck took a beating for it, but you could get through uh, like what Nick was saying, with ORVs and that sort of thing. And that uh, road, technically it's a seasonal road uh, from where the road commission maintains that it comes up and indoor property at that property line. And then comes down a road which used to be really heavily forested. You know, I mean, you can get through with cordages and all that kind of thing. And then it would go down and then uh, people would continue to travel all the way over to what they call Marsh Road, where it's a little stub road coming in off of Summit City. Okay. So when I started developing the property, um, we had uh, you know, two entrances planned. Uh, as things went along, I decided, you know, we're going to go ahead and open up Sulkum Road to uh, to the west. This would give us uh, better access, better uh, access for a lot of the first responders and everything. I mean, it just seemed to make sense. So we went to the road commission and the township. And uh, we, I got all the permits to upgrade the road, not only the portion that is on our property, but I did it all the way out and built a blacktop road of what was currently sand and would wash out all the way to Garfield Road. Now, you know, some people may not have needed that or whatever, but I did it. I didn't receive any help from the road commission. I didn't get any funds from the township. I paid for 100% of it. Uh, we built it. Everything's certified. It's all good. Three years later, um, since I bought it, you know, we had a lot of traffic going through uh, this subdivision. It's a great thing. We have uh, you know, a few residents now moved in. We've got several homes under construction. Uh, very proud of it. Uh, I think it's one of the most beautiful uh, subdivisions in the area. So one of our problems has been is we've been having a lot of traffic and, and this traffic uh, comes basically 24 hours a day. Uh, it comes from our north uh, entrance, which comes off of the waste road. I built the road from waste road all the way up to our entrance. That road in itself, um, is bordered by the township's 40 acres uh, on the uh, east part and the 40 acres that's in the uh, conservancy on left. Anyway, we did all this and we're maintaining all of these roads, even the roads that are in our private road system. So we have a private road maintenance agreement that covers all of them, including Sulkum Road beyond where you guys maintain it. Now we're at the point where we're getting a lot of traffic. A lot of the residents have been coming to me and saying, hey, you know, you've got these signs up and stuff. We've got traffic. Uh, you know, speed limits. I'm like, you know, okay, this is pretty standard. You're speeding through a brand new road. And they're using it as a cut through. They go from, you know, uh, Summit City and Marsh Road and they go, you know, through our subdivision where they used to go the uh, through the right of way, which a lot of ORVs are using right now. So anyway, long, make a long story if it's possible at this point, shorter. Um, we came up with the idea, we talked to a lot of the residents and we said, hey, you know, what about gating our community? And it really is to cut down uh, the use of the public's traffic uh, coming through. Um, and some of the, some of the traffic, most of the people are very courteous. I mean, you know, they're just going to work. It's, you know, it's a cut through point. Uh, however, you know, it's our roads. We're going to have to pay for it. We're the ones that maintain it. We have liability if somebody, you know, blows through a stop sign, somebody gets hurt, uh, a child or whoever, it, it falls on us. Okay. So we all know how liability works. So I started working on this idea and uh, and looking at our third entrance, which is the west entrance that comes off to Sulkum Road, uh, we have an issue because Sulkum Road comes down, like I said, and, and at the bottom, which I've blacked out all these roads.
Mr. Man, let me interrupt you. I, I think you're three, three minutes.
Oh, excuse me.
Uh, I'll go, uh, this is an agenda item, uh, and you will have another opportunity to speak about it. This is just public comment.
Yeah, no worries. Okay. I'm doing a little filibuster in here.
Uh, yeah, I understand that, but there, there may be other people and we have to give equal time to everyone. Thank you. Does anyone, please let me know when the three minutes are. Um, does anyone else wish to make any public comments? On any topic? Okay. All right, moving to item seven, the consent calendar. Kylie?
The consent calendar is used to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together without discussion. Request by any person present to remove any item from the consent calendar for closed discussion as an agenda item that automatically respected. The action noted in parentheses for all items remaining on the consent calendar are approved by the commission action adapting the consent. The manager recommends that all items be adopted. One minute, two payroll, three account payable, four financial report, advised community.
Uh, do any of the commissioners wish to remove any items from the board? Does anyone from the public wish to remove any item from the consent? May I vote that we approve the consent. Motion by Commissioner Underwood, support by Commissioner Lehman to approve the consent calendar as presented. Roll call please.
Horn?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Underwood?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Kent?
Yes. Motion passes. Moving on to item seven, D commissioner updates. I'll start with Commissioner Lee. Any updates on any meeting?
The meeting that you and I had with uh, MDOT, Green Lake Township, Long Lake Township and Blair Township for the Interlock and Corners. I just wanted to thank our staff and MDOT and it was a good meeting. We had the chiefs from the fire and EMS from each of the townships, along with the township supervisors, um, Hyder and myself, because those are our townships. And then uh, our uh, road commission staff and MDOT to talk about the plans, getting ready for the roundabout being held at Interlock and Corners by MDOT in 2026. And we talked about some things like the temporary like going in and the set um, setup for the detours during that process. The initial start to that project will be just after the, this year, right? April, I think they said of 25. We'll begin the first phasing of that roundabout project, which will be completed in the fall of 2026. Um, there are links to the map for the detours and I've been letting, like, I just went to Blair Township this week, just let them know and um, Supervisor Von Shine has put a big map up at the township, but any residents um, that live in Green Lake, Long Lake or Blair that will be affected by this roundabout construction should take a look at that. You can get a link to the MDOT project list on the road commission website or on the MDOT website. Uh, it's going to be a significant project in um, a pretty well-used corridor for people commuting. So input is always valuable and we have places you can give us input. Of course, it's not our project. It's MDOT, but we do um, operate most of the roads that are being used on the detours. So I just wanted to thank everybody that helped put that together. I know Kylie did that and I thought it was, was good. Uh, we did Blair on Tuesday and um, they were real excited about the meeting and hope that we continue to have these kind of preliminary meetings just for for this transparency, but mostly just to get everybody's input.
Thank you. Mr. Underwood?
Uh, I've just been going out and meeting the new folks that have been elected into the townships. Um, Kingsley has got some good news. They got a grant to do the railroad processing, so um, construction there in Kingsley and some of the Bronson Road down through there. I know they're a different agency, but um, that'll be good if we're all working together on those. So that's about it.
Okay.
Nothing clear.
Thank you. I attended a meeting uh, regarding the MDOT project that's going to start next year uh, at M22 and M72. Uh, they're building a roundabout at that intersection of M22 and M72. And uh, it was a meeting attended by uh, Garfield and uh, Long Lake Township supervisors. Uh, they were uh, representatives from Elmer's and DTE Energy as well as the EMS and emergency fire uh, folks from Long Lake and Garfield Townships, as well as the county emergency uh, management coordinator. And the purpose of that meeting was that in, I think, January 15th, somewhere around 2025, I think around that timeframe, uh, a section of M72 closed to where Tom's is, all the way to the intersection of M22. Uh, sir, you cannot close that.
I'm unable to talk, so I was trying.
Uh, yeah, just make sure that.
Thank you.
Uh, that, that section of M72 is going to be completely closed uh, for relocation of utilities, uh, gas line, water, sewer, uh, cable, phone lines. And Elmer estimates that it will be about four weeks, so let's just hope that it is for four weeks. But what that does is that it will require uh, significant detour of traffic. There's going to be traffic that's going to get detoured through Gray Road and Cedar Run Road. Uh, there will be detour Tilden Road off of 72, and then there will be some detours in Ludon County, uh, Ludon County as well. So let's say coordination with the Ludon County Road Commission as well. Um, I think it's preliminary at this point and nothing, the final detour has not been finalized, but there is a plan for that duration, just for the duration of this project. for that duration, just for the duration of this project right now, to put a temporary light at the intersection of Cedar Run and Gray Road. Um, I wanna be clear, it is only for that four-week duration when you, yeah, the utilities are going to be removing and relocating their utilities. Now, Elmer, uh, I think Elmer's uh is in discussions with MDOT uh to maybe extend that placement of the temporary lights throughout the duration of the project. Uh, the, it all depends on whether uh MDOT at some point revisits their decision uh and designates that as a detour. Because remember, they're claiming that M twenty-two is gonna remain open all the way through Grandview Parkway for the entire duration, so there is technically no detour. Um, I believe Elmer's has some concerns about that too, as to whether this project can be done safely. Uh, while keeping M twenty-two and Grandview Parkway open the entire time. Uh, we don't know whether MDOT is gonna change their mind, uh, but obviously there is there, there exists the potential that M twenty-two and Grandview Parkway could also be closed if Elmer's is able to convince uh MDOT to do that. There will also be, I believe, a traffic light at the intersection of Tilton and Cedar Run. If, if that's the plan as well, again, a temporary light, only for the duration of the four weeks. Uh, Barney Road and Harris Road will be closed to through traffic, there will be no through traffic allowed uh on those two roads, and that is to make sure that they're, the traffic flows uh smoothly and it does, especially with the placement of the uh temporary lights, uh, we can't have traffic coming out of those side roads. Uh, Carter Road in Leland County is also going to be closed, so. That is what uh came out of that meeting, it was well received, everyone was very happy that they were getting this information ahead of time. Even DTE commented that, you know, this was in, in their mind, uh, a little too soon, but they appreciated that. And I think the township supervisors and certainly the EMS and, and, and the county admini- emergency coordinator appreciated that as well. So, uh, if there are any other updates, I will share that with the board as well.
So MDOT's gonna pay for those lights?
Uh, I believe so, yes, because it is, it, they're requiring.
DT.
No, DT is gonna pay for it.
DT is paying for it.
Yeah, yeah, DT, because they have to. Okay, uh, item E, commissioners discussion, this is not limited to any meetings that you have attended, but any items that you would like to discuss.
There's a, there's, there's a big crowd here tonight, that's somewhat boring, I'd like to talk about the, the bid stuff that we have. Do you, should we delay this till the end?
It's your.
Yeah, can we delay it to the end, please?
Okay, sure, we can do that, Commissioner Gilman, any matters to discuss? Commissioner Underwood, Commissioner Horn?
Just wanting to know, having been absent, maybe I missed something. Is Arnold Road, um, there were people that maybe thought that it was on the agenda tonight. Was, was it supposed to be, and then it was changed, or did I miss something on?
Apparently, there was, there was some action at the Acme Township.
Ah.
It was, they initially submitted a petition.
Okay.
Uh, and then before it, there, it was a time to put it on the agenda, they.
Okay, gotcha, and then the, the question from the gentleman in public comment regarding the posting of the agenda on a website.
I believe we posted on Fridays.
I, I believe.
Monday?
Yes, I give you guys the weekend.
Yeah.
And I'd love a note to subscribe to our notifications.
Okay, good, I, I just wanna make sure, I know we can't respond to public comment, but that's a valid question, and I was just curious on that. So it's Monday that we posted online.
Yes, okay, okay. Item that, twenty twenty-two, four budget amendment number four.
Yeah, so this is the fourth budget amendment, um, where I did the thirty-one, this is about a month ago, um. I didn't pick up the, MDOT, they have TWA, uh, pretty substantial, wanted to pay some shoulders, I need the uh recognize that expenditure and revenue. Um, we also are getting some federal aid for uh one of the signal projects that uh, at the uh West High School. Um, that's in your work packet tonight, twenty thousand dollars for that. And then there was um the wetland bank, I'm just moving that from twenty-four to twenty-five, since we're not gonna have any actions.
So, Phil, I just have a, just sure, question, where do these amended allowance?
They show up, so if you look at on the budget amendment number four page, at the very top, the twenty thousand federal revenue. The four hundred eighty-nine thousand is the MDOT TWA's. The four hundred fifty-eight thousand dollar credit, that's the wetland bank.
Okay.
And then when you go down below, um, you'll see the forty-two thousand dollars in there a few times, what that is, is um MDOT gives us overhead on, and all the work we do for them, so it's currently at nine point four percent. And that's a credit to administrative expense, so we push it through overhead and, and record the list of credit, but we also credit the admin expense activity as well. And then down below, you'll see state maintenance expense uh increase. Uh, four hundred eighty-nine thousand, and then under subrises, the wetland.
What's the uh administration forty-two sixty?
So that's the MDOT overhead, it's, it's more of the accounting process and how we report the transaction. We record it as an overhead uh type, but, and then there's a, a credit that offsets that because it's not affecting fund balance. Uh, but the part that does affect fund balance is the credit we're getting from MDOT, that's posted in um uh, at, under administration.
Okay, so capital out with seventy-six, seventy-nine, that is the MDOT?
Oh, and I, I apologize, so the capital out, like, we did the security cameras. I, so I wanted to pick that up because I believe they wanted a deposit before the end of the year. So I'm, I'm just, we're not, anything that we don't spend this year, I'll come back to you next year early and do a budget amendment for all the carryovers.
Okay. Any questions, Phil, regarding uh twenty twenty-four budget amendment number four?
Motion to approve the budget of number four.
Motion by Commissioner Lehman, support by Commissioner Gilman to approve budget, some twenty twenty-four budget amendment number four. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Underwood?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes. Okay. Item G is discussion of the twenty twenty-five draft budget. It is, I think we have a handout here. And uh, Phil, do you wanna just lead off and then, and then?
So, in, a couple of weeks ago, we had, had a, uh, public, the last meeting, we have a public signing. Um, you know, regarding the twenty-five budget. The only changes I made was picking up that wetland bank, moving it over from two thousand twenty-four. And then the Zimmerman Road Safety Project, we had a little more updated figures from MDOT. We have the contract in your work packet tonight, uh, showing the federal revenue and then the expenditure side. Um, adjusted that project. Uh, what was obligated?
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, there's just really no other changes.
So the, uh, the Zimmerman project, under which heading would that be reflected?
Under construction project.
Construction project, okay, and, and uh, what was the adjustment? Do you recall that?
Oh, I, I thought it was an eighty, twenty.
Yeah.
And um, I, I had a little bit, I think I had two hundred and, uh, I, I apologize, I don't remember exactly.
It was two sixty-two was the total project cost, something around two sixty.
Two seventy. I adjusted the revenue down thirty-nine thousand to the actual number of, that, uh, we were, we're gonna be kept at. And the actual expenditures went up about six thousand.
So the estimated cost for that Zimmerman project is two fifty-two, one hundred?
Right, I had like one fifty-five.
You had one fifty-five. Uh, did we ever figure out whether it's eighty, twenty, or some other?
It's not, it's ninety, ten, but it's, it's then until we hit that hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar cap.
Oh.
And then what?
And then.
And then it's all on us.
It's a hundred percent.
Hundred percent, correct.
So anything beyond, so the difference uh between two sixty-two, one hundred and one ninety-two is a hundred percent ours?
Correct, and I have identified the mileage, since we have, you know, uh, uh, mileage funds available.
Okay.
Uh, it's a local vote, so we're not participating in town shifts.
And I'm sorry, what was the other adjustment you made besides Zimmerman?
Um. I don't think I made any.
That was the.
That was at the wetland bank.
Oh, wetland.
Over.
Uh, for, for the twenty twenty.
Yeah, the allowance, and I got a call in with um Holly Vickers at the wetland bank.
And where would that be?
project.
Which, which heading would that?
Um, so that will be, you'll see it on the more detailed pages.
Yeah, okay.
So probably on your four page of the pack, I believe. Third page, under other state sources, you'll see wetland bank.
Got it. Four fifty.
Forty, I had fifty-five.
Any questions for fifth?
We, we have public here, you wanna explain wetland bank and how we use it?
So the, the wetland bank is um MDOT sets aside money off the top of Act fifty-one and puts it into the wetland bank, and what they do is they, they'll contract with um local agencies that can receive MTF funds, and we have an agreements to um work with conservation uh, Perry the Grand Traverse Regional Land Conservancy and, and get purchase medication credits, um. It's that way when we do projects that impact small areas of wetlands, they have a bank to uh give us credit for, so we can proceed with the project without having to develop wetlands and go through and acquire, so it's, uh, streamlines the uh process. And we did um Upper Manistee Headwaters, if you've ever been over there, and uh, Gaskett County, but it was a pretty impressive site, that was the first one we did, and um, they have about four to five other uh sites that are potential, uh, that we can close on and make a few more credits.
Thank you, any other uh questions or discussion before we vote on which is, I believe, the, what, the resolution in age?
So, Zimmerman is set for twenty-five, that's right?
It's correct, yes.
Are, are both projects set for twenty-five, Perkner's and Zimmerman?
Okay, that's what I was wondering.
Okay.
Any.
Getting federal aid, so.
Right. Next summer, right? Yeah.
Okay.
And the designs are about that, so it is.
And we don't, with that federal aid money, like, we have to use it, like.
For, yeah, you have to get it all, you.
Any other discussion? Okay, so we will go on to the item H. The resolution, yeah, has, that is on page twenty-seven of your packet. Yes. Um, does anyone have any? Well, let's uh, I will entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dash zero nine.
Most likely.
So, commission, motion by Commissioner Gilman, support by Commissioner Underwood to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash twelve dash zero nine. Um, any discussion regarding the resolution, any questions pertaining to the resolution? I have a question, um. If under B, uh, further resolved, paragraph four and five, it talks about transferring fifty percent from the primary to the local road fund, and then in five, fifteen from the local to the primary. Um, is that some sort of a state law requirement that you have to have that language in there that we can transfer up to fifty percent from primary to locals, and then fifteen from local to primary?
Not sure why we mirror the language, it, it, we can't go more than that.
We can?
No, we can't, we can't transfer more than fifty percent.
And what about from local to primary, I mean, I, I'll be limited to fifteen?
We would, but we could not.
Yeah.
It'll seem so little.
That's why I was wondering, like, it's like, so we transfer fifty percent and then we transfer back fifteen percent? So, un, unless it, it's some sort of a statutory requirement that we have to put the language in there that it's, we have the ability to do that, not that we.
I would have to research. But, why we have that specific, but, I, we do, we are allowed to transfer, and we always do, typically always do. At the end of the year when we close the bumps, uh, the local road fund is typically an opposable transfer from the primary to convert that opposite. And, and the year opposite.
Right, because I was noting in one of your handouts here that the local road fund had a pending balance of negative one.
Yeah, we did a lot of work on.
Yeah, so I can't imagine that we will transfer any money out of, you know, the local road fund. Yeah, exactly, yeah, right, so I, I mean, unless you, unless it's some language that's required in a resolution of this type, uh, where do we get this language for the resolution, is it something that we get from?
Probably was handed down, I don't, I don't think we had it here when I came in two thousand eighteen, and I probably brought it with me from the ground. Cause we are supposed to have a, a general appropriations act.
Mm-hmm, do you know if that is required in this resolution?
Uh, I don't know if that's specific, if that needs to be in.
Alright. Uh, any questions regarding the resolution? Okay, uh, we have a motion and support, roll call, please.
Underwood?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes. Should passes, resolution is adopted, congratulations, everyone, we have a project for twenty twenty-five. Okay.
Phil.
Thank you. Thank you, Phil, for all the work, um, alright. So now item B is Slocum Road abandonment discussion. I believe it starts at page twenty-eight of your package. Um. So we, there's a petition on page twenty-nine, uh, which is to abandon non-maintained Slocum Road, and the petition summary, just for benefit of the public here. It reads residents of Slocum Road and private roads serviced beyond Paradise Township, Grand Traverse County, Michigan, who make known their desire for the abandonment of the seasonal non-maintained section of Slocum Road. And then the portion that they are, uh, that the petition is seeking uh, the portion of Slocum Road that they are seeking to abandon is the seasonal section of Slocum Road and right of way, which is a non-maintained county road located east of Garfield Road, starting at the north one quarter corner section four, I won't read that, and continuing east for one point three one eight, or one thirteen hundred and eighteen point four eight, yeah. Okay, so that is the request before you, there is the number of signatures, one question I had for our road manager is do we know if all abutting landowners of the portion of Slocum Road that is being petitioned for abandonment, sign this petition? I saw one email where one individual asked that his name be removed, and I think it's Art Duran.
I believe originally everyone was, but I think there has been people that requested to remove their name.
Okay.
Mister Duran was not an abutting property.
He was not, even though he signed it, okay, so do we know if any of the abutting property owners have withdrawn?
Uh, oh, there's only two.
Okay, so all, one hundred percent of the abutting property, landowners on the abandoned portion have signed.
Yes, Mister Walton, Mister.
Okay. Okay, so, um.
Excuse me, on, on my petition, there's actually someone that abuts that section that um, did not sign that, and she signed my petition.
I'm not sure what petition you're referring to, sir.
Do you have a copy of that?
What sec, which uh property owner?
Um, I don't remember her, I'd have to see the petition.
This is the, the section where, where I can see.
Let me see if I can, um, it's like, oops, go. Right up in here somewhere.
That's not the section, that's not part of it.
Oh, okay, so that's just in, you're talking, in Paradise Ranch.
You're talking in Paradise Ranch, okay.
Alright. So, um. I know that Mister Man was up here. He were uh doing a presentation. Um. Would the board be interested in having him? Conclude his presentation or sign off on it?
I think he should be able to. He's the.
I I I believe so. And as shared, I'm gonna allow him to continue. And so Mister Man, if you wanna. Come up and uh and I. And perhaps just pick up where you left off.
Yes, as I was saying.
Yes, that's a very good segue.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you very much for your patience. I know you guys have a lot on your agenda tonight. Also have with me tonight Doug Mansfield and I'm gonna relinquish some time to get into the minutia and I think. Maybe better explain uh where we think we are. As far as why you uh as a board might consider doing this. From my my end of it, and this is what I was saying, um, and gentlemen Nick, you're uh, you know, along with the residents here. Uh, there have been use in Nick, I know in his family, been going with my permission over the last three years. Uh, coming through our subdivision while we were kind of developing it and now it's getting more developed, obviously. But a lot of people are using uh this uh section. Uh, Slocum Road and continuing beyond that point. Um. To Marsh Road, which actually is a stub road that comes in now. Uh, Derek provided a map. I think you have it there and that really, he did a really good job of detailing it. Um. But there's also some other maps that I'm gonna refer to. Uh, but it really shows the uh, the history of Slocum Road. First of all, it was abandoned in nineteen ninety-one by the Road Commission as it went north and I believe and connected to at that time. Uh, Highway six sixty-one, which I I think is an old highway. I mean, Doug might be able to speak to that. Why they didn't at that time, the Road Commission. Abandon it at property line, at the section line. I really don't know why the uh. They did do it, but that's what we're seeking now. We believe that. Um, if I go ahead and whip our subdivision. Decide um. To gate this community, we have the the north section comes off of. Uh, Voice Road at our property line. Before we're doing that, we don't need any permission for that. And then up off the bottom here uh at Marsh Road, uh, it's on the city coming. Uh, the north of it and that are the south entrance. So. Right now, our west entrance is uh right there. At uh. The point where Slocum Road enters our property. That is a seasonal road like I was talking about before, just down uh below that. Moving towards Garfield is where the Road Commission. Uh, has their turnaround and we plow all the way down there to that. So in other words, we're servicing roads and rightaways that we don't even own. Integrating with the Road Commission, uh, which we did a few years ago and permits. The interesting thing about this is is that, A, when the Road Commission abandoned the Slocum Road in nineteen ninety-one. For all practical handsome purposes, uh, the Slocum Road was bifurcated at that point and didn't continue anywhere. So as a as a road in the road system right now, this road only goes to service. Our new subdivision. There's no other property owners that services. It deadens at our property. And from that point. Uh, is where a lot of the, you know, the off-roading stuff that's gone before. Now, what's interesting about that is. Uh, the Grand Traverse County Off-Road Vehicle Ordinance, uh, number nine, which was uh. You know, passed in two thousand twenty-one, oddly, the same year I bought the property. Um. You know, goes through all the 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 language for the roads that you guys allow uh off-road vehicles to travel on. Some are approved and some are not approved. There are different highlights and all that stuff. And I know that Derek has a copy of that. Uh, we have actually blown up a a copy that's a little easier to see, but uh Marsh Road. Has a county road. Does not uh touch. And never has. Um, Slocum Road and on all of your maps. Uh, including the one that Derek did for it, you can see that. That's in blue. Where the seasonal maps and all that stuff. Here's uh, he's got it for you. And this shows you that. This is by. The ordinance, by your ordinance. This is not an ORV trail. It's not authorized for. It's actually. Not, you're not. It's not a legal right to do it, to do that. So that's the one issue that we have about. The ORV use, um. And then other than that, we're the only people that would use this road. Now, um. If in the case you were to decide not to abandon this road and we still wanted to do our gated community, we would have to gate the very top road, which is called Elk Horn. That's the one that comes in right after our property to the left or to the north. Then it goes all the way downward. The the property uh comes across one of our roads. What's the name of the road? I name all the roads. I can't remember. Anyway, some some road that comes down there. And uh. That is actually, you'll see that it crosses through that red area. So that. Where it crosses through that red areas is everything is blacktop. But yeah, but not to the east of that. Uh, we're only showing that part of the section because technically that um. That's where it showed originally where Slocum Road was naturally. Now we see it's actually a little bit behind that, but in any case. Um. What would have to happen is I would have to gate the north side and the south side. And up there, so it would take three gates. In order to to do that. And what would we be doing if we did that? We would literally be inviting the general public to drive all the way down. Turn around and go back because there's no, it's a dead end. There there would be literally no reason. They're not going through our subdivision anymore. Because we're gonna gate it. So. I would think the sensible thing to do would be backing up at our property line, allow us to have one gate. This is better for first responders. We're not dealing with three gates. Um, it, I think it should have been done back in nineteen ninety-one. Uh, so I think the Road Commission is following up on uh something that I think made sense. Um. And then as, uh, you know, the the last note before, I'd like to deal some time to Doug uh Mansfield if that's your. That's your pleasure. Uh, is that, you know, we we don't really have trouble with our neighbors per se, but it's uh something that we feel that because of the the people going through the subdivisions and some of the problems that we've had. Uh, we're going to do this. So we would ask for the Road Commission to just uh take a a good hard look at, you know, who is really affected. Uh, I don't believe, I think the spirit or maybe even the charter of the Road Commission is not to provide. Uh, recreational trail for ORVs. But. What this says is that ORVs are allowed on particular roads. Uh, throughout the county. And so in other words, we don't have. You guys don't have roads that service for the only. Reason for these. Uh, as I understand, but I could be wrong. So that's the reason that we're asking for that and that's, is there any questions that you have for me before I step away?
Any questions from Mister Man?
I I have a question. Sure. The parcels that about the. Part of the road you'd like to close.
Yes.
I'm assuming they're not all built.
No.
Yeah.
Uh, actually, uh, the one that's on the end, the big one, uh, is of. Mike Walton's uh property. And I own all the rest. I own the LLC uh Par- Paradise. What is it? Perfect. I can't remember my own nice old names. Yeah, it's Paradise two forty LLC. And that owns, uh, currently I have forty-six lots uh left out of seventy-six.
Would any of those parcels have? Um, plans to have their driveways, have their curb cuts off?
No. No, and that's the other, that's a really good, that's a. Great question. Actually, we did that, uh, Doug Mansfield and I, we looked at this, no driveways with the exception of. The one that comes right off of the section line there, which is a road called Elk Horn. Uh, it has an address. Uh, we have no no addresses coming off of Slocum Road. So they are all on our private roads, uh, which we service on. Paved as blacktop roads and we. Uh. And we have cluster mailboxes that I just put up in three locations and the postmaster, uh, you know, is really happy. We got another one down on the second.
Uh. Commissioner Gilman.
Yeah, okay, so so right now. We have, um. Unmaintained. The other side of Marsh Road, which is that stub that's slogan.
So, yeah.
And then we have. A right of way or do we have any, is there, is there any path? Is there any uh evidence of use? I mean.
You know, I think uh I'm, this would be a good question for Doug. I can answer it in short, but he'll give you a more definitive and maybe a background on this. And as you guys know, going back to nineteen thirty-four, you have the McNidd Act, which. Uh, during that time, uh, the state of Michigan granted all north, south, east and west of rightaways on section lines.
Section lines.
Throughout the county. So you guys, whereas. You have not, uh. The Road Commission uh. Has abandoned it in the path. If that has not happened, then you you still retain that right of way. Now, that right of way can be. Upgraded to a seasonal road or a county maintained road, but rightways do not necessarily have.
I I understand that. I guess my my point is, and and we apparently nineteen ninety-one, what we abandoned was actually. A section. That strayed off of that particular uh. Off the line.
Well, yeah, i- i- it actually that that area you have red there, that is Slocum Road and Slocum Road used to uh go into there and about where you see our road coming up in that same location is where. I believe if you look at the legal description, it goes north and I think it ends up at some old highway.
And then to the to the west of. Uh, the red line there, that is a currently is a serviceable road that we maintain.
You maintain. But if it comes in, and I don't remember exactly how many feet, but it comes in and then. You have a turnaround there with your white sign saying if you go past here, you know, it's all seasonal, seasonal.
Right.
And so we maintain. Now, I paved the whole thing.
So it was a seasonal road and then paved it.
Hey, what's pointing to which point?
Would you like me to get up there?
Yes.
Yeah, that would.
Starting in Garfield.
Hey, so from Garfield to the red line.
Yeah, okay, uh, Doug, you can tell me if I'm even close to this, but I'm gonna take a shot at it. So it goes into about here. Thereabouts, and then you've got a turnaround where your trucks are. And then right there, we also have all the mailboxes for uh Nick and all the the people that live on Slocum Road. South of that is the Kingsley Club. It's the sort of the sportsman club, excuse me. So that's firing range. So once you go from here, we're still on seasonal road. Now, Art Dorn lives here and there's another lady that lives right here. Those two people technically are on the. Apart where we are maintaining and we don't charge them anything. Um.
You're providing access for your your development, essentially.
Absolutely, yeah. We paved all this whole thing and.
So you paved all the way from Garfield to where?
Uh, Garfield all the way down to.
Where the dot is, the black.
Well, no, it's case of the vision state. It it's right to right to here.
To where the road comes out of.
Yeah, this is all blacktop road. This is, this goes on to, it's uh, it goes up a hill. And this is where the ORV activity is happening. It's the only way you go. You can't get up the road.
So the area east of where the the portion that you want abandoned, what is that Marsh Road?
Well, Marsh Road comes in right here and I believe Derek's uh uh map shows it pretty well and it's also on your map that is uh.
Yeah, this is the.
Off-road thing, so.
So and this is, and then Marsh Road comes across. This is Summit City right here. And it's our show.
The dual corridor through there.
So this is technically.
So this is Slocum.
It's still Slocum, but.
But it's our, it's our.
And 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 the west side, it's Slocum. On the on the east side, it's Marsh.
Okay, Marsh Road comes into about here. There's a couple homes yet. And and then stubs out here. So in this area between the two areas. Um, it it doesn't connect. But there is a right of way in there. But the roads do not connect. You guys do not have roads. In your Act fifty-one that connects Slocum Road to Marsh Road. According to you guys.
But we have.
What's that?
But we have. Yeah, you mean, you mean more attention developed.
Well, I I don't know if.
Even as a seasonal road, we have a right of way, but we don't have a road.
Well, you don't, you you have a seasonal road to where it ends. And that is Marsh Road. It ends, Marsh Road ends there. And then you have a right of way. Because you still have a right of way, it's not a whole, I think it's section thirty-four. And then here you've got Marsh Road. Which is kind of weird because Marsh Road comes over there, but it stubs out here for these two homes. The in-between is, it shows on your map. It it's bifurcated. There's nothing there.
Because this is, this is, that Summit City Road.
Yeah.
All the area west of Summit City is slow. Right?
Well, you have. You have a stub road. So.
I think also.
So you have a stub road. Good for her. Uh, this is.
Thank you.
City.
Yeah.
You have a stub road that comes about three hundred feet in. I think it shows on Derek's app.
Right.
Yeah. That is Slocum Road. That is a developed.
Right.
Act fifty-one stubbed road.
Yeah.
And you have a gap that you have right and right of way, but it's not Slocum Road. Under P Act fifty-one.
Huh.
Then you have a section, this section of Slocum Road, which is a seasonal road.
Uh-huh.
Um, it's under the Act fifty-one. Okay, and and then that seasonal goes on to about here where there's a. Sort of cul-de-sac, turnaround, appropriate turnaround, and then it's a maintained local road for you guys, okay?
So the gap that you mentioned between the stub seasonal and what is that gap?
It's just a McNidd Act right of way that allows you to have certain.
But it is our right of way.
It's yours.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So.
God, thank you.
So the general public can drive from Garfield Road. To Summit City.
The general part, no. No, so not, okay. Let me talk a lot of physical features of that road and why we couldn't stand it, okay? My little history here. I think last month I was here as a supervisor of thirty years.
Yeah, true.
This, now I'm a, now I'm a a land developer or agent for thirty years. And I've been dealing with this property for thirty years. Um. As as Phil. Cost the previous owner tried to develop it. Um. And knowing what the goals and objectives of the road missions, if you maintain those rights on there, okay, and curb cuts and these kind of things. Um. We originally went through this project and this was a blown out local road, um, washed out. Um, sand, maybe a small gravel face. Um, we were receiving very little attention. It comes to a head, a beautiful point. A photo op. Right at the property line. And then it drastically falls off. And then it comes down here. Into a valley and it drastically goes back up. So. There is a resident of here. They're literally on that corner because it falls off. So when we originally looked at developing that site. We could, we did the the fifty-five mile far vertical curves up and down that would take. To to approve that right of way. It there's cuts and fills to make it what it had to be to meet the standards. Would have condemned or taken up the houses on both sides. It was two to three hundred feet of cut in order to get that vertical curve. And then and it was impossible almost to make the hill come back up to Summit City Road. So. Um. Could you drive it? If if you had the big enough truck and 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 I was out there with some guys with some big big trucks, you could drive it. Um. Could you drive it safely? You know, did the road, the question was, when we met with the Road Commission engineer at that time and the permit agent. And the servicer.
Yeah.
Was. Beyond that point, have we have we ever spent a dime? No. Have we ever improved it? No. Do we have any future plans to improve it? No. Then the comment was, get rid of them. Okay, so but that was um going to take a process. And everybody was in construction mode. So the the suggestion from the Road Commission was, if you need to improve that. Past where you. Pass this drop off. You can do it as a driveway. We'll give you a driveway permit in our right of way. Is what they did, okay? And so, and because the driveway didn't have to meet the speed access. They would say, beyond this point, here it's this flat and then everybody falls off. Um. There was never ever any attempt to try to extend. The road from Summit City to the west because of drop off, which is so severe. However, there was a discussion about it's still right of way and you you still have to allow these things to happen. Now comes, um. The, so in that proceeded. I do want to say my history and if you went back and it doesn't matter now, but Phil was the best neighbor these people could ever have. Because if you go back in the Google photos, historically, it is a. Open sand pit of tre- tracks from from not Bill's cars using this property. That's not, but because so historically, there is a. I I I identify with a feeling that, oh, boy, we used that as our parking, our roads for a long time. The question is. Um. The Road Commission had no interest in. The road commission had no interest in continuing that road, it wasn't any part of the, you know, one time Summit City was gonna be a bypass, that Slocum Road going to the diagonal was gonna be a bypass around uh the area. Uh but they'll, those plans changed. So you're left with that using that property for an ORV trail, okay? But then the interest, when we just, we we just looked at this was in the the issue that the people have put forth is. We want to use this for recreation trails, which the road commission has not been in the sub as far as I know, not not ORVs. Um so. Your maps. If you look at this. This is your approved map.
Mm hmm.
That right to go. West or east of 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 Garfield on Slocum Road. And get to Summit City Road. Never existed. And frankly, Summit City Road, the green line shown on the legend going north to to a Voice Road. Is on your map, says private property, no trespassing. So nobody ever had the right to use that road either. For any of this, and it's not any kind of a threat, but in your ordinance, it's five hundred dollars in recurrence, fine. So this is an enforceable map, it's an enforceable plan.
But Summit City Road is a public road, right?
But it's not approved, it only has uh uh and this is twenty one, so this is before any development. Because the conservancy and the township had interest there. It was private property and the part of the, I'm sure part of their plan, which the townships had the ability to do. You know, that they didn't want certain roads and I should note. And uh as the excavating team and owner now, he'll know that section of Slocum Road. That is right in this area. We actually petitioned, asked, begged. The road commission to close that to RVs because it drops off so severe. And and there's no sight distance looking down that hill. And so um that's why our roads never continue that and we had the south entrance coming up that way.
Could we plow those that road?
Yeah.
Yeah, you could, you could not get a truck down there ever.
So can you point to me where the general public drives through, why there's this traffic issue that we heard about?
Yeah, basically, right, the the ORV, the trail people, because you have them, basically come down here and they're going down this trail. When you said, is there anything here evidence? There's a, there's a horse trail and some some side two tracks as people try to get up the hill. Way out of the right of way limits, you know, and these kind of things. And then they get back up here and then they do, they go up the, the trail riders do, go north. And then the approved road drops off, they go down this big hill and back up and then back on the approved road. Which uh was very tough to build within the right of way. Um and it's um, the banks are, you know, delicate. It was everything we could do to get that one to work.
So you're not talking about automobile?
So so that's the ORV question.
Yeah.
Okay, automobiles are coming in, turning into the road network, going out here and and either proceeding then to most likely to the east.
But that is nothing to do with, I mean, you could just have a gate on the roads that go into the subdivision, really it's nothing.
Do three gates.
And that's what the other people here is adjusting.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so the the road that you want to abandon is more about through traffic of ORVs or horses or whatever.
It's more.
Because you could solve that without any road commission involvement by just putting gates up on the private property.
The the three, yes.
Right? Um so the the road abandonment is more about off-road vehicles accessing this. Kind of valley or.
But but they would understand, they only have rights through your plan to go to here. They don't have rights to go through this.
No, I I appreciate what you're saying with that, I'm just saying.
This is, this is not.
I I don't either, it's it's public, it's it's publicly.
What makes you say that they don't have rights to go?
Well.
It's our right of way.
This is, then it should be on your plan in some other manner. And and I say this now, as you mean township supervisor, who's who's man is spaghetti with ORV trail that all these people are supposedly trying to get to. And I promote that, you know? But I'm saying. Um if you're gonna open up all these section lines, ORVs. You know, and it's particularly in a situation like this where. And I can, and if we want to end this conversation, if this concerns.
Right.
We should go out and drive it and see, but this is not. For every, especially this one, it's not for every mom and pop in a gold card.
No, but we're talking about access. I mean, and and generally, you know, if the public has access, they have access, whether or not, do we have a policy that I'm unaware of? Um. Do we have something that says that the public can't use our right of way?
Oh, there's certain rules throughout the county that are ORV designated and not designated.
Okay, horses?
Not designated.
So this isn't, this isn't designated, I know it's not designated on your plan, the gap. And and this going north is trespassing on your map. Does your private map read correct?
I don't understand, how is Summit City Road a private, listed as a private road or or map? I don't understand that.
That's under Act fifty one, isn't the ORV only the thing with the sun certain.
You can't drive your ORV.
Not designated to there because you're saying that there's the conservancy there, the service.
Well, you know, when that came about, we opened up that whole act, the townships had ability to sign off on on things. You know, the council didn't want that section, right, ORV approved.
Yeah, so this this private designation is is only limited to the ORV usage.
Right.
Doesn't mean that somehow it's a private road, not subject to road commission jurisdiction, it's still under our jurisdiction.
But it's not open to RV ORVs.
Sure, and 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 our concern is not really with ORV, our concern primarily is. That ten fifteen years from now, as this area develops, whether there'll be ability to build the roads. That we need to move traffic in a in a well organized manner, and if we start giving up our right of ways, they're gone forever.
I understood that.
So, I mean, you know that pretty well, that the next area of growth in Grand, growth in Grand Traverse County is going to be that, this part of Grand Traverse.
I got that until last night.
Well, regardless of whether, how much, how much the local townships may resist, in the end, you know how that works. Through litigation or other uh other turnover, things change, so. That's the road commission's perspective uh on roads, we are not, you're correct, we are not, we are not in the business of our week. But we are in the business of planning for the future and making sure that our right of way is protected so that in the event we need. To build an infrastructure that we have divided into.
She's not gonna build a road.
Okay, so. This is the ordinance that, this is your ordinance.
This is, you keep saying our ordinance is a Grand Traverse County ordinance.
Okay, is it Grand Traverse County's ordinance? So it's not a road commission?
No, we don't have.
Do you, do you, have you, have you had an opportunity to review this?
I reviewed it.
Okay, in there, it states under definitions what a road is. So this does not cover right ways, this is only roads, just so you know.
As ORVs.
Yeah.
Okay.
And and if you read that, that's the reason we even bring it up. Look, bottom line here, I'll make this real simple for you. If if you want to keep this road in perpetuity because you believe a hundred years from now, fifty years from now, or whenever, that there might be a a reason to build. All the way across, I understand that, and that's your prerogative as you pointed out, but I will say this. That um you know, and it's it's going to be something for the future boards, uh you know, just like in nineteen ninety one. Here, we're standing here, how many years later, thirty five years later, or whatever, and we're dealing with something that maybe that's the reason they didn't uh. Do anything else, but they, for whatever reason, they they abandoned it going north through this property. And here we are thirty five late years later, maybe thirty five years from now, there will be another board. Trying to say, hey, you know, we're we're gonna build this road, but I'll tell you what, it's it's, I don't see it, I don't, I don't believe it. Because I'm the guy that just paid. Over for three and a half miles of road to build up over your right of ways. That weren't even roads and the the Summit City Road, your attorneys wanted to abandon that, they recommended it. Who was the the attorney?
Carrie Lyons.
Carrie Lyons, I don't know her, sites, does that ring a bell?
Hmm.
Okay, you might want to talk with her because she wanted me to abandon that. Just my attorney. Well, Doug, you might be not our attorney anymore, but this was a couple of years ago and I will tell you that I was the one, the developer, everybody else, my partners. Doug Mansfield, my attorneys, everybody said get rid of it, including Wayne. Who said it's a liability, we should get rid of it, and that was a recommendation, recommendation from Carrie Zeitz. And I overturned it, and the reason that I did at the time, because I thought, you know what, there's a lot of people like Nick and all, there were people that I saw. And they're constantly going through there with ORVs, I'm like, you know, this has hurt us to have the frigging things going now, I didn't know about this. I didn't know that there was actually. Uh an ordinance for ORVs in Grand Traverse County. Whether it's your ordinance or not, this is the ordinance. This happened in two thousand twenty one, it's active. And you know what? They're saying you're not supposed to do ORVs, I don't care whether they do ORVs.
I'm gonna, let me be straight, I don't care about the ORVs.
Yeah.
Don't care.
Yeah, I've said it.
For me, for me, it's just, it's access.
Right.
Okay, it it's about access. We give that up.
Yeah.
And we lose control of allowing people to go through here.
West.
Okay, east west, it's ours.
Well, that's, and and I and I understand that, you know, and I looked at this as a developer and then I'll step down after saying this, I really looked at it. You're from Garfield Road, you're, I think, a mile north of the blinking light in Kingsley, which is one thirteen goes, you know, to the east, right? And then. From Garfield going north up to Voice Road, you're another mile, and that's the, that's the cut over. So what people are doing, really, it's not so much from. From Garfield Road, they don't go from Garfield Road through Slocum Road that much. The main traffic is north and south of the area that Doug was talking about, that's that's a. You know, basically an ORV trail, uh and it's, and that's why we built the stub coming up. On the right of way and then from Voice Road up to our north entrance. The problem is, is that. If you guys don't do this, which is fine, then I'll gate all three of these entrances. And you're gonna have traffic that goes down and ends with no way out, it's a dead end, I don't know what. I don't know what the point of that would be, other than the fact that you don't want to give it up because maybe sometime in the future, but it's not good for uh first responders. Because you're dealing with three gates instead of one, and you're inviting the public. Down a hill where there's no outlet.
I have a question. I have a question about that.
Sure, you got it.
Um.
You guys are gonna have. Excuse me, there there's no public comment at this point.
This is where I keep running into the pretend brick wall.
Okay.
So I I heard your comment about um. It would be inviting people to a dead end, which I understand now that Doug explained we've got a valley or a not really drivable road. Then where are those people going? When when somebody, no, a car.
They're going through our sub.
They're going through this. Right, so if your subdivision is gated, like many of our subdivisions are.
Right.
Eventually, people are like, yeah, no, we're not driving through that sub because.
Well, they may, they may know it, that, you know, and the locals will learn at some point.
Oh, for sure.
So let's say we take what you're talking about and you say, hey, look, we're gonna preserve this because sometime in the future, we may want to build a road all the way to Summit City Road. To benefit.
I'm not even talking about that.
Well, but that is what you're talking about because. That's that's. The only, the only value to that. The only value for what you're talking about is to build it all the way through. For the future, regardless of whether it happens in our life or not, right now it comes down to here and it stops. This is my road, this is the road going down this way, this is the seasonal road, we maintain all this, but. So we'll have a, we'll have a gate here, we'll have a gate here, and we'll have a gate here, they will come down, they'll have enough because we'll we'll give them a a sixty six foot. So they can do a three point turn. So you're gonna invite the public to come down to a road that dead ends and has no way out. Now, if you want to do that and you and and the residents want to, you know, continue using their ORV V path, even though there's an ordinance that says you're not supposed to do it. That's, that's out of my purview, but I'm just pointing out the truth. You say that you want to keep this. Fine. But. I question whether there's any value to doing it because you're half, you're you're a mile either direction of going to where you want to go anyway. I mean, really, is this, would this ever be, if you had, if the state says, hey, we'll give you a million and a half dollars to finish this all the way through, I mean, if there really any call for it. My my subdivision right now, seventy six lots, has three entrances.
So, as the only, as the only other property owner. I'm sorry, you have not been recognized, I told you that this is not public comment.
I.
So let the gentleman finish and don't interrupt him, and I'll ask for public comment at that time after he's finished.
Understand. So. I'm really just trying to respond to the commissioner's point, and I think it's a valid point. That to preserve something in perpetuity for the future because it might, you might want to build a road through it, I I totally get that, but. If I think if if it's worth looking at where it is placed. I mean, where are you actually going to, what are you gonna actually do? All it would do was so that people could go through here because this is a private, private road. Right now, the road that we built. If we gate this off, the general public is gonna come down here and they're gonna have no place to go.
Cause right now, the general public drives there to cut through your sub, right? I mean, they know.
That's right.
It's maybe their regular commute and they know it's how they can cut through.
You know, I mean.
But the very first time that there's a sign up there that says no through roads, gated community. If they drive down that and need to make the three point turn and they want to do that every day, just because magically the gates might not be there. That, I I I mean, I understand what you're saying, I'm trying to be logical about it, I understand the emotions involved, I live in a subdivision, I'm fortunate, it's a cul-de-sac, people don't cut through it.
Yeah.
Um but they were going to open up our sub to that and I remember all the stuff, long before I was on the road commission, so I've heard it and I understand and appreciate it. I'm just trying to be logical about it, removing the emotions, that's what we have to do. Our job is to preserve the public right of way, um you may have heard some very emotional people here earlier about Arnold Road. And Hyder was, they were reminded of Hyder's words, that our job and the burden of proof is the public right of way, right? So those, so that's why I need to ask you about the people that come through, and I know that some, I'm sure they speed and it's absolutely problematic. But the gate would stop them, we aren't the ORV commission, so we're not here to to discuss the ORV access at all, although I appreciate the negatives and positives of that as well. So what I'm hearing is you are able to put up public. Or gates on your private property.
Yeah, okay, so let me, let me uh, let me say, okay, so we have, yeah, well, so that that's the end of it, as you're saying, and and that is certainly our option here. But. Since I'll never be here again on this subject unless we continue this, uh and maybe that's something that's worth going or not. But there, to do what you're talking about and maybe what you're doing, because I think what you're telling me is that you would like, or you see the sense of holiness for a future that could go through.
I I actually, there's a couple of reasons, I think.
Okay, all right, well, uh let's hear it, uh so we have a gate here, we would have a gate here, we'd have a gate here. We'd have a gate here and we'd have a gate here, so that's five gates. And and I know that, that's no big deal, I don't, I have a problem, it's not money issue for me at all, it was just, it seemed to me that. Since we built this road. And the the traffic that's, the only traffic that's coming through here, other than our residents, are people that are cutting through, now we're gonna stop that from this. The majority of the traffic, in my opinion, is coming from, you know, here, uh through here and then Voice Road, we see them all day long. Most of them are pretty courteous, but we have a lot that's been. Uh reckless fact, factually. So I I I don't know uh what else other than that, you know, the the ORV issue is what it is, there's an ordinance, so if it wants to go forward, that's fine.
It was, um I just want to say.
Yeah, quickly, I think we have.
One, one, one. Um. We. We went through the public process just here, where we went to the town board, I want you to know this, and said. Cause there wasn't a whole other design that off Summit City, okay? And we went and said to the road commission and staff at the time and and to the township and said. We'll put X number of dollars in, we'll do this, we'll do that. Have you any interest in cooperating and getting traffic to move? And I said, I did one of those, I've been on these township boards for thirty years and we've talked about Summit City extending it, all of a sudden, nobody had any interest. In ever extending Summit City, and I I I'm amazed and no one's, I felt insult, like I was being insulted that. Summit City was on the radar for decades and all of a sudden it's nothing. It's kind of a shame because we had a cooperative effort that really was solid in our soul, you know, can I, I want you to know, this man paid for us to build this for all the costs, we did it, so.
Thank you, Doug, and and thank you, Mr. Man, I think, I think we have, uh I think we are sufficiently.
Okay.
Informed of your position, uh okay, sir, uh if you could come up and state your name and address.
Uh Mike Walton, I represent uh four lots in this subdivision. Uh the one lot that I, that I own that is on Slocum Road, this is parcel number seventy three right here. Uh Randy and myself are the only ones that this road borders on, okay? It seems like in this conversation, we've got a little bit confused with what we're trying to do. We're trying to abandon this portion of the road, here, Summit City Road.
We're trying to abandon this portion of the road. Summit City Road, I'd love to see the county build that all the way through. That would solve all the issues here. I could care about that. My concern is this road right here, okay? Is anyone on the staff here, uh, a civil engineer? I don't know, it's not. Is, is there a staff engineer? Okay, and then Doug, obviously you are, right? I'm a contractor. I'm the one that built this, uh, built roads every day, right? In my correct in saying that this road can never be built through at county standards and stay within the sixty-six foot of right of way. Never, none of the manners. There's no way you can build a county road through there and stay within your right of way. Never happened. And I can tell you this, houses are gonna build along here and these people are never gonna grant a right-of-way permit for you guys to extend your cut slopes and your fill slopes into their private property. This will never be and can never be a county road. So it's actually ridiculous to try to preserve this and this for the road commission to do what? To do what with it? What's, what's it gonna do? We already know that it's unlawful for ORVs to be driving through here. Now, I'll tell you another fact. Randy, in two thousand twenty-four, has spent in excess of sixty thousand dollars doing soil erosion repairs on this subdivision a year and a half after the permit was closed out. My company went and did the repairs on all, listen, I was a kid. I, I graduated from Kingsley High School in nineteen seventy-six. I use this property as my personal playgrounds for dirt bikes and ORVs. We ripped the shit out of this property. Okay? If the, if the public wants to continue to do that, they should have collectively got together and bought that as their personal play pack. But instead Randy built a high-end exclusive subdivision. I think the cheapest line in here now is in excess of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, up to three hundred thousand dollars. Million dollar rooms are being built in this subdivision. And these are private roads. We, we should have the ability to walk our dogs and push our babies and carriages without being run over the cut-through traffic that wants to come off Garfield, the worst cut-through traffic, those that come down uh, Summit City Road, come into the sub, back going on the Summit City Road to get the Voice Road. That's the cut across traffic. I've worked out here for a year and a half. I see it. My guys have never been run over working on the road.
So your gate there on Summit City would be helpful for what?
Our gate here would be helpful on the other end of Summit City and right here. Why in the world would we put three gates when one would surface right here? This road will never be a county road, no matter what you want to do. Never gonna happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just have one real quick.
Say your name, please.
I'm, I'm Tyler Butler. I'm one of the new residents to Paradise Ranch. Um, my main concern, obviously, is safety for my daughter. I'm probably the guy who's talking about with the dog and baby. There are people that fly around those turns. Um, I don't care where it gets gated, as long as it gets gated. I will say, if you gate it where you guys suggest, Apple Maps has that as a continuous road and we've got stuck trying to get through it.
It is a danger.
Yeah.
Well, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Can I make a recommendation? We have a letter uh, from the township opposing the abandonment of, uh, any portion that we're in control of. Now, having said that, um, they also wish for us to, to maintain Slocom Road as a public road. Um, the sections that we do, I imagine we will continue to do so. Uh, get your township onboard, and I'm, I'm all in with you on this one. You gotta get your township onboard because one of, one of, one of the very heavy weights that we have to bear is working with the townships. You know for a fact, when union township talks, we listen, right? And, uh, if you can get your townships onboard, I think you could probably work, uh, with them a little, you know, Rob, Rob's not a bad guy. You can work with him on this. Um, I think, then bring it to us. This is not ready um, as it is, and I, and, and I don't want to be argumentative here.
No, I understand. And, and if you don't, I don't know if I'm able to speak or respond to this, but thank you for doing that. It doesn't surprise me that, uh, the township is, uh, you all right?
Yeah, I'm okay. I just slid my knee into the table.
It's not a funny bone. But I, I, I understand that, but I, I would like to make the point, I think it's worth noting. Um, you know, when it came to improving Slocom Road, the township had no money. No, I mean, and really, uh, I don't know if they really wanted me to do it. Uh, the past, uh, uh, zoning guy, Roger Williams, was not in favor of it. And why? I don't know why, but we did it anyway. The road commission said, Randy, if you pay for it, we're not putting any money into it. So I paid for the whole thing. So I, I don't have any hopes that for whatever reason, that the, uh, the township doesn't want to, uh, support what we're doing. Uh, maybe because they believe sometime they're gonna be able to see a road through.
I don't see a road going through.
No, well, I'm glad that you said that because we need a voice of reason on the board. You need to say that loud and you need to say it to the township because that letter means nothing.
You've got, you've got a number of people clearly support this, your property owners, uh, clearly you're, you know, I mean, the, the, it's been noted that you're, are making, uh, high-end homes and high-end homes, you know, pay big taxes and, and frankly, uh, they should be listening to you.
Thank you. What's the board's pleasure? I mean, there is a petition for, uh, for a abandonment. We have to act on it at this point because the petitioner has indicated that they want to move forward with their petition.
I'm gonna make a motion to deny the request for abandonment of Slocom Road in the portion. At this time.
Second that.
That way we will fit our timeline that we have to do by law.
So there's a motion by Commissioner Corn, second by Commissioner, uh, Underwood to deny the request for abandonment of a certain portion of Slocom Road, Slocom Road in Paradise Township at the present time. Any further discussion by the board?
I pro, I pro, I might have a conflict and so I'm gonna, I will not vote.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion?
I just wanted to agree with Commissioner Gilman. I had to ask the question because I had to understand and I don't live there, so understand that. Um, but I, it would take a lot for me to vote against a unanimous township request to not do something because we represent everyone in the county, but we rely on those elected in our specific districts to speak for who elects them. So I agree, if, I mean, at no point would I have voted for this with this letter in front of us.
Yeah, that's, that's interesting to know.
That I won't.
Sir, I think we've been giving.
That's okay. You might as well put a prerequisite to your applications in, that you won't do it without the, that way we'll go there and we wouldn't even have gone through.
We have a motion. This was a deliberation section. This is not a.
Understood.
No, no, no. But what I want to say, me as the commissioner, and I am allowed to state this and to have the time to state it. Me as a commissioner will not vote. It is not a prerequisite for an application. It is me as a commissioner will not vote against a unanimous request from an elected township board. That's all.
Thank you.
Understood.
Any other deliberation? Roll call, please.
Gilman?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Lehman, as of today? Underwood?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
The request for abandonment is denied.
Happy holidays. Thanks.
Thank you, Doug. Thank you. Thank you for your. All right, uh, moving on to item. I don't think there's anything in the package.
Yeah, yeah, I thought so too. I probably took a few months time. Yeah, right.
We're on Paradise Ranch.
All right, Derek, go ahead. So the only change, we want to get previous to align the water.
Can you please tell them to kick this discussion a little bit outside? Yeah, this is still.
I'll try to do this way so my non-ever here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Derek. So the town line road, uh, especially at the last meeting, uh, when you guys have this in front of you. Um, so we do some scope work on that and we, what we did was pulled our road ahead, which is a high-volume road down in Paradise Township that needs an overlay and some controllers.
This is the section from, yeah, from one thirteen to Voice.
Yeah. Add shrivers and overlay, probably spend that, so we'll pull that, extra money from, uh, online and put it out.
And also the town line road project was reduced in, in the cost from the original one to what million?
It was like one point seven.
One point seven, now three fifty.
So put on three fifty, we just normalize wedge and it's.
Okay.
I just.
Okay, so the town line got changed.
Is is, is Clark Road in addition?
It's pulling it ahead.
And they kind of hit that dollar figure.
And you've got a half a million dollars worth of miscellaneous wedging on here, here, for, yeah, wherever, yes.
So the town line road has dropped down to three hundred and fifty. Remind me what it was the last project.
Because they're crushing shape with the cross curve.
It was like over a million.
What's that?
One point seven million, okay.
So, uh, uh, Dan, are you recommending any action on this or is this an informational item?
Yeah, this is the board plan doing for our one-year project. We'll bring the road to you individually.
Thank you.
We're pricing for.
Okay.
Thank you. This is what we wanted to see.
Yep, all right. Any questions on this?
Can we talk to our townships about this or is this too? No, I don't mean that. I don't, I don't mean that.
Can you tell them? I don't think it's too preliminary.
Is it reasonable then for them to expect that if we have it on this?
This is the rules that we're going to bid and bringing back to the board to prove individually. It's not a guarantee, so.
Right, this, yeah.
But this is the.
Yeah, not a guarantee.
This is what staff is planning on bringing to the board.
Okay, so we can, we can talk to them about that.
A primary road?
Yes.
Yeah.
It's kind of funky because that's where they did. And then they didn't finish at, uh, one thirteen and went off.
Yeah, they went a couple ways.
It's weird because it's a primary road, but its functional class is still local on the federal system.
Yes, yeah, I, I wouldn't have talked about it.
It's not federal at all.
Any other questions?
Isn't Ucar and six thirty-three where the temporary traffic lights?
Yeah, yes.
So how does that work with an intersection widening?
I'm adding a right turn that way for solid.
But that's permanent, right? You're adding a permanent right turn?
That may stay depending on what the property owner agree on, because I believe they have to go outside the right of way.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, these are all, these are not, none of these are temporary projects.
Intersection widening was temporary for the.
The widening in spots may be temporary for the intersection because they had to go outside the right of way.
Yeah, but I think the performance question was, was actually Ucar and CR thirty-three. That's our, that's our project, right? But is it a temporary project?
There, it's improvements for the detour. The improvements are, I believe.
You get paid for detour. That's why I don't believe we should be allowing the seventy-two traffic to detour on our roads without getting paid. From the, from the ground about. MDOT said they're not detouring them on our road.
Right, yeah, no.
DT is, DT is, is doing it as a contractor.
The state is claiming that they only have to do it because it's a, um, but there's doing it. State's not doing it, they're saying.
Yeah, there's all kinds of carve-outs that they go out.
Do we have, do we have to accept the carve-out from DT?
What, no, what do you mean, the detour?
Yes. DTE has a right to detour on our roads?
No, they don't. I think they sat down, they, they sat down with us, right?
They offered nothing.
They.
No, they're paying for the lights.
They, 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 in terms of, for your question, that yes, they're not going to pay for the wear and tear on our roads from the increased traffic.
Yes.
That is true. And we had, we discussed it and they basically said we don't.
So we, so we say no then.
Then, then, I mean, look, they, so the, the, the reality of that is the traffic's still gonna go there minus the traffic lights that they are putting in there right now. So, so we're not gonna just block traffic going on gray road. What we won't get is like, they won't say, okay, well, then we are not gonna put the temporary light at the intersection of gray.
So, but this is done for the convenience of the contractors and.
I understand that, but the, the M seventy-two is gonna get shut down no matter what, whether we agree.
Well, MDOT said it didn't have to.
No, they talked about M twenty-two. This is M seventy-two and, and they are talking about, apparently, again, it's not MDOT, it's the, the, the utility companies, everything that, they're saying that they have to shut it down because they cannot safely keep that one lane open while doing that work.
Shouldn't MDOT determine that?
Apparently not. They leave it to those utility companies to do that determining. As long as MDOT is not spending any money, I don't think they care, uh, how the utility company does it. Yeah, they just established a deadline and said, you have to have it done by this time, because you have to remove what's under the ground in that section. How you do it, they leave it to the companies.
I understand that. And I, I, I just don't understand why.
They have to pay it for it out of pocket. They have no choice in their, MDOT's project discussion. They have to pay for this out of their.
I understand what you're saying. I understand.
No, the utilities have to pay for it because they have to pay for it.
Yes.
The utility pays a lot more money than we do. They're gonna beat up our roads.
Yes.
And we're gonna get no help from them.
Not on the repair and I, and you can refuse them, but so.
What are you getting?
Yeah, you, you, what, you can't refuse the motoring public.
No, no, but you can't. You don't, you don't let them put up signs and then it's not a detour and then it's not legal.
Well, the only good thing is the gravel put it shut down, so.
We can say that you're not gonna, the problem, the thing is that whether, whether there are signs or not, when seventy-two is shut down, people will go down that road. And so it doesn't really matter whether there are detour signs or not. That's where the traffic is gonna go. So you might as well get something out of it. What are we, what are we getting? The temporary traffic lights.
That, that's, that's actually why I was asking this question. I, I wanted to finish with that, Derek. We're gonna, once again, I'm gonna ask you what's a dumb question, but we have temporary intersection widening, so let me just figure it out. We're gonna, they're gonna put some asphalt down and then when the project's over, they're gonna rip the asphalt up. Am I right?
They could, depending if the asphalt is outside the right of way and what they've agreed upon with that property. We have not done any sort of right-of-way condition on our end, so.
Cause those, those roads do need, um, intersection widening and turn lanes. And if we could get something out of the project, which would be a permanent intersection widening for Ucar. I mean, I just know happening, you know, to do Blair Township, that particular road is talked about almost every meeting. They're going to see this plan and be very excited. And I want to be able to clearly enunciate whether the asphalt is gonna be ripped up when the project's done or not. Is there a way that, that we can find out if MDOT has negotiated with the adjacent property owners to allow that encroachment to the right of way?
The last thing we had with the, the townships was previous to the one we had.
Right.
And they had discussed it. I haven't heard nothing of it.
Okay, that, because those would be the things, if we're not getting reimbursement for damage down to our roads, maybe we could at least get some kind of.
Well, what I was asking about was some, was improvements to our road to, to.
Intersection widening is an improvement. A very important one on these that are lacking the turn.
But two different projects, right? I mean, they are, yeah. So, so Alan is talking about the M twenty-two, you're talking about the inter.
But the idea is we don't get reimbursed on these and I hear you, but what if they could secure a permanent change instead of temporary changes on these.
By my, my understanding from what Derek is saying is this, I'm talking about strictly about Ucar and CR thirty, uh, six thirty-three. That, that, that the intersection widening has been something that's been negotiated between MDOT and that property owner. Now, we don't, we are not privy to that contract, so we don't know what that agreement is. So it would depend upon what MDOT would, could possibly say, yeah, go ahead, negotiate your contract with that property owner to keep it. And then it would be up to this board to decide how much that. it would be up to this board to decide how much that contract is going to be and what the that property owner wants to keep it. So so I I think M dot, my understanding from M dot is that they usually, and you were there at that meeting, they don't usually keep any of those improvement.
Right.
Pass it and then they and their default position was that you wanna keep it?
Yeah.
It's on you. So I think I think at this point, it's kind of premature to uh discuss it because we don't until we find out what whether that property owner would be willing to to extend that agreement between the road commission and us. And before that, whether this board is agreeable to the based upon the price.
So the answer to my original question is we would tell everyone that is temporary.
Yes. Yep. Okay. We move on to item. No, he said that we don't need to approve anything. So. All right, this is the, these are the agreements regarding the two road safety grants that we got. One was for the high friction surface and permanent pavement markings for Zimmin Road. And the other one was traffic signal modernization for Hurkman Road. For the first item, which is I take a look at the page.
One one something. So we moved that we approved the cost participation agreement and resolution for the cinnamon road high friction service treatment in the amount of ninety seven thousand dollars. With our commission's portion, the amount of ninety seven thousand dollars, well, not ninety seven thousand one hundred and seventy one dollars.
Support. Motion by Commissioner Gilman, support by Commissioner Corn to approve the M dot cost participation agreement and resolution for the Zimmin Road high friction service treatment and permanent H R forty four, permanent pavement margins uh in the amount of ninety seven thousand one hundred and seventy one dollars. Um, any, I have one question about it. Has this agreement been reviewed by a legal counsel? Cause it's a lot of exhibits there and a lot of information there. Um, and the resolution is authorizing the board, my ass, the chair to sign it. I would feel a little bit comfortable if someone has reviewed it uh because I certainly, I I'm certainly not gonna offer an opinion on it as board chair. Uh, I I think it should be our practice that we should have these contracts reviewed by legal counselors or they come to the board for approval because we can't be blindly signing an approving contract because without knowing that it's okay. I'm sure it's okay. I'm sure it is standard language that state uses in all these contracts. I have reviewed their further clients. There's no room for negotiation. I understand that. But I would feel a little bit comfortable if we added that that subject to legal counsel.
Do you want um our bill to look at these and say the standard M dot agreements we accept and you can accept though?
Yes. I just want so I just want the green light from legal so that we don't in it so that down the road, if there's a dispute as to it, then we don't are not caught in the situation where we were not aware of what are what we were signed.
But these come to us all the time. Every time we have a federal.
I understand that.
Okay.
I understand that. So if you're, if the board is comfortable approving this contract without having to be viewed uh this, then 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 that's fine. You.
Derek, can we don't Derek, can we delay this a little bit while you send ship this off to Bill?
We don't have to delay. We can vote on it. Just make it subject to legal counsel.
Okay.
Yeah, we we can. We can approve it.
Okay.
Okay, I'll change the motion. Subject to legal counsel. I have no problem.
Change the board. Okay. All right. So subject to legal counsel is the addition to that review.
Okay, I cry a line for three seconds about.
Yes, this is deliberation.
Um, when we looked at these safety projects, did we know we were gonna have to put so much money to them?
I think that would.
Joe, you're shaking your head no.
No, because this is the one that came back higher rate. This was, we thought this was eighty twenty. That's how we.
Thirty eight or something.
It's something.
Is it thirty eight or is the whole thing capped?
It's ninety ten to the cap.
That particular year we put in for four grants and got them all. You're capped at a million and a half. So this is the remainder of that million and a half. And anything left over.
So we just have to be more cognizant that there's a that we shouldn't be applying to all these because they don't like it when we turn them down, when we don't accept them.
Mm hmm.
So we have to think through when you present these to us, what our total obligation might be. It, you know, fine. The road commissions, we spend a lot of money. Somebody say, well, ninety seven thousand. This is two hundred and sixty thousand dollars total or something like that.
Mm hmm.
Would we really spend two hundred and sixty thousand dollars on this?
No, I I I wouldn't.
What, to make Zimmerman a raceway? Heck, no.
Yeah, I we wouldn't spend two hundred and sixty thousand on it, but but I but I I think your point is well taken because when we if when we get those uh grants, like Derek said, I think it's a a fixed pot of money. But at that time, I don't think we know how much we would have to pay above that. Apparently ninety ten.
You don't. You don't know what you're gonna get.
Yes.
To get the grants or not.
Yeah.
So we need to be thinking about what the the total work might be. And if we can only apply for three, let's say, just because because you're only gonna get a million dollars out of this pot of money.
Sure.
So don't apply for, because we don't wanna turn them down.
Right.
So don't apply for more than we have the money to accept. Cause this would be low on my list.
We actually considered that when we first looked at this this group of projects, if you recall. I think in fact we looked at about si- six or seven.
There was the Garfield Otter was uh the, yeah, that was.
And we actually left some of them out.
Yeah, we left some of them out.
Because we know if we get it, we can't say no.
Right.
We're not saying no. I I just wanna talk about.
We're sure. Yeah, no, absolutely.
Is ninety ten normal to the cap? Is there a standard for this or do we have?
Ninety tens not for this particular one. Ninety tens for the street one system program like the signal back points. That was a ninety ten. The rest are eighty twenty.
The, okay, so that's fairly, we can kind of assume eighty twenty to a cap.
Correct.
And then my question on the cap is we have the pot of money to use and is it just we use it, we use it, we use it, and then the remainder is what's left? Or is there an individual cap for each project?
I think it's just total per occasions.
Okay.
It's total. I thought it was like, was it a million and a half? I thought it was like eight hundred or a thousand or something.
That's the max you can get like per project.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, there was a fixed amount of money and 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 Alan's point is well taken that we should be looking at as to okay, how much, whether we, if we, once we hit that cap, we should just stop there bec- and and then.
Right.
Because that's probably not how we would spend the money.
Yes.
And there's probably a three year lag. Well, no, we applied for this last year, was it?
Two years.
Two years ago. So obviously you have a greater increase in costs and that sort of thing. Like you can do the best that you can to present.
Original estimate when I applied for the grant was three hundred and forty three thousand and I did the construction on some of the two sixes.
Okay.
Okay, so you actually estimated it at five thousand.
But I'm.
It's just that we got them all, Derek, right? That that's what's ripping us up at this point is we got them all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
Well, I guess you'd say good because you've you've made good applications.
Right. Yeah.
We have we're leveraging, leveraging your lessons.
Okay. Okay, I have. We have a motion and a support. So roll call please.
Corn?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Underwood?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes. Motion passes and resolution is adopted.
I'd like to make a motion that we cost participate in the twenty four fifty four eighty in the amount of twenty thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Lehman, session by Commissioner Underwood to approve the M dot cost participation agreement and resolution for preliminary engineering activities for North Long Lake Road, Perkington Road signal modernization to the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Any discussion? Okay, roll call please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Underwood?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes. Motion and resolution passes and resolution is adopted. Item M, the curtain of sale of Kingsley facility. Again.
So we got the appraisal back on the existing Kingsley building. So we've got a couple of suggestions for you uh need to make of how we do proceed going forward. Um, Chris Fordice was not able to make it tonight. But he did send a representative.
Okay.
Um. So you wanna speak at any time? Uh, cool. Please feel free to jump in here.
Sure.
So we can um we have two people that are very interested in it. They're ready to make offers at this time. We could accept either one of those offers legally. Now we have appraisal. We could take this to bid. If we get a real estate agent, there's a couple options on the table there. Some of the some direction from the board would probably like me to proceed.
Let's see. What's the prices?
If we go to bid, I didn't want to release that dollar at all.
Oh.
I just have a question. What what's our, how would we make a decision?
Going to close then?
Yeah.
Oh, we can.
We can't go into a session over this. When I actually had an official offer, I could bring that to you.
What's our phase one, phase two liability of that property?
You mean environmental?
What's our liability?
Well, that I think um I think, well, typically, and and maybe that is something that uh uh and I'm I'm sorry, I I know I've met you.
Yeah, no problem. My name is Maxwell.
Max, I knew it would be Max. Um. And maybe Max can shed some light upon it. So it typically of, you know, any contract that gets entered, the the buyer reserves are right for in uh phase one, at least a phase one environmental assessment and and subject to purchase uh based upon those results. But and and then based upon its historical use. I'm sure there'll be some findings there. And and then they will apply for brown field development funds. They'll be prepared for other grants. And in discussion, in discussing this particular issue with Chris, he had some suggestions regarding how the land bank uh can assist the road commission in that. So Max, if you wanna just talk about that a little bit as to how the land bank can be of your use to us if uh assuming that there'll be environmental issues identified as part of any assessment.
Okay, yeah. And like you kind of were already talking about, you have a number of different options associated with the property and what we're able to do is utilize some of our tools of the county depending on which direction you decide to go. So um you know, a great example of a land bank project where she's working on in downtown Kingsley, uh John's Auto uh was a property that we purchased and we're working in concert with the DDA to uh come up with a plan to redevelop that property. So um sort of the same principles could be applied here potentially with uh getting the land bank involved in the actual sale of the property. And what that allows is for the full suite of uh the of uh brownfield to be utilized, you know, on the parcel. And so uh either, you know, when you go to uh RFP the property and the potential developer needs some brownfield support, that's where we can come in and and help out. If you guys are looking to um you know, do some some of the work before it's, you know, it's going and uh on onto the market. That's something to consider as well. It's just it kind of depends on on what direction that you decide to go. But the the tools are there in terms of being able to support some of the the site work that would need to be done associated with any environmental cleanup. So you also might decide like, hey, there's um, you know, doing the, you know, environmental work would be upon the the developer to do uh during a like a due diligence period and so forth while you're.
Do you work with the developer? If the developer contacts you, I guess what I'm asking is you made a statement about you know, the land bank could get involved in the sale. What, how would the land bank be involved in the sale?
So in the in the instance of, and I'm just gonna use the other example in Kingsley, uh the land bank helped finance the sale of the John's Auto properties. Uh, in again, in partnership with the DDA, we have a an agreement that they will develop the property um within a period of time. Or they basically were hoping to finance that whole deal. So we could, you know, maybe potentially look at something similar as an arrangement with what you're determining to do with with this particular property.
So let's just say, like Dan said, we we have two parties who are very interested in it, right? And we enter into a purchase agreement with one of the parties for sale of the facility. Sure. As part of that purchase agreement, they say, well, we're gonna conduct this environmental assessment of the property individually, you know, how
Sure.
Phase one and phase one, phase two. They do that assessment and it reveals that, yeah, there has to be some environmental remediation work that needs to be done. In that scenario, is there a role for the land bank? Because now the purchase agreement is between us and the buyer.
Mm hmm.
But the buyer is interested in utilizing some of the tools that are available to remediate the environmental issues. So is there a role for the land county or the land bank in that scenario?
So that that's a, that would be a great instance where we would get uh our brownfield involved and come up with a brownfield plan potentially for for the site. Um, you know, it just depends on, again, sort of what environmental, what the environmental reports come back at. You know, maybe the the site is 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 a clean site and it doesn't need some of the the cleanup activities, but as you mentioned, based upon historic use of the property. Yeah.
Okay.
You know, that might be likely.
All right. Thank you. Any questions?
I don't know where I like to do this. If somebody makes an offer.
Thank you, Sam.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, it's Max.
And they uh can they do the phase one and phase two? There's sort of, once they do that and identify those things, they're sort of off. I I my understanding was they're off the hook even buying the property.
They could, if if they could make a contingent on that, absolutely. They can, they have a uh they could ask for a ninety day period in which to and and make that uh make their upper contingent upon the results of the environmental assessment. So essentially it could be to the degree to which there is an environmental issue, if they, if their assessment comes back that it needs a significant amount of remediation done or something. Yeah, they can say, you know what, that's really not.
That's not what I was thinking of. I I I I thought I understood the law a little different way. Cause I, that by identifying these sites, that's good. That 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 gives the state um some role in, they're not liable for the future to clean up for the past problems.
I don't know about that. I I you mean the buyer?
No, so so the buyer, what you're saying is if the buyer at least identifies it and then buys it.
Yep.
Then you think by identifying it, it it.
By identifying it, that then. If they wanna build homes on there, then wouldn't they want that to be cleaned up?
Well, I mean, Kingsley isn't that more likely to be of of an industrial or business site of some?
Actually, I don't. I think Dan can, well, we don't have some light on what, do you know what those developers intend to do?
One would like turn into a pro business, construction business. Any other one, um I don't think they'll be putting homes on. I think they're looking at making that maybe an entrance and maybe like a a small garage. Prepared garage.
I guess we we have to look at what our, so if he identifies this and the state law says, okay, you've identified it, the buyer, you're off the hook. Now, is that is that is that us? And is that where we need the land bank? I mean, that's where we need the brownfield.
No, I think it's a seller. If they have identified it, I would say I would make the argument, we are off the hook too.
Yeah.
Here, you know what's on the property, you.
I I don't, I'm not sure. I I'm not sure the law is that way that nobody's responsible. I think we gotta figure that out.
Millions of dollars cleaning up a gas.
But when you identify it as the purchaser, then it makes you eligible for the funding to remediate. And that's where the purchase is. None. At least in in my line of work, that's what we do. We go through phase one, phase two, we get it all looked at and then de facto by identifying it, it creates a financial benefit for the purchaser. And they're like, yep, you're purchasing it, but it's got some contamination. So here, let us help you with these tools, which could be land bank, could be brownfield, you know, whatever.
Curious to the extent of any remediation of it were necessary, is the site serviced by the water and sewer in Kingsley?
It is like sewer, water, gold severe, but we're not currently booked.
Okay, so it's it's eligible, but it's there. It could, they could make it happen.
We're right at the village limits.
Okay, right.
It happened.
Well, I'm just, I'm just considering.
Yeah.
The 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 point of remediation.
Yeah, we're on well there, but the stuff stops at the corner of our property.
And we had our water tested. And we had our water tested.
Not from where.
It all depends on what the buyer wants to do. Again, the buyer may not care and may not even want an environmental assessment. We are just a small.
Nobody would let them buy that property without.
Okay, well, but but that's up to the buyer, right? I mean, that we 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 are not gonna require it.
Well, wasn't Copper Ridge Road Com- Road Commission, and it was the salt pile that was there, and that's what created the brownfield eligible funding.
Right.
We're a disaster everywhere we go.
Yeah, I I think I my 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 experience has been that if the if there's a. If there's a purchase of a uh of a possibly contaminated site. They do it, that is, they do an environmental assessment, they identify it, and then they. Ask for language in the contract that says that this purchase, completion of this purchase is contingent upon. Their ability to secure these different brownfield dollars and.
How long does that take?
I don't know. I, it depends upon how long which county you're in.
How long does it take to get brownfield?
Yeah.
Like after you've purchased the property?
Yeah.
Well, there's two options. There's a grant for a loan, right? There's a revolving loan funder, you could get a grant. It's a hell of a lot easier to get the revolving loan fund, I can tell you that. The crowd doesn't love the grants.
Basically, what just what Hater just said, though, I mean, you know, how long does it take? To determine whether or not you're going to be eligible before you buy the prop?
It's not hard. That part is not that lengthy, no.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I don't know how how quick fast uh Grand County Brownfield work. I know in some of the more smaller counties, they're just eager to get that brown. Develops.
The uh and the appraisal will just, you know.
Do we own that property outright?
Yes, so for today's meeting, the this, the really the decision that Dan is looking for is what is the what direction the board wants to do with it? Does the board want to list it? Does the board want uh to solicit bids? Does the board want to again authorize and only approach the approach the two parties that have expressed the interest? Does the board want to entertain land bank? That is what we are deciding.
I would go to solicit bids.
Yeah. It's a publicly owned piece of property and the whole public deserves the right to know available and make a bid.
So listing with Realtor would accomplish the same thing, wouldn't it?
Except it adds a commission.
Yeah, I was gonna say financially, that's not.
We could just ask for a request for proposals, uh RFP for it, then.
How does that work? Do you put the appraisal in? You don't put the appraisal in the RFP. So how does that work?
Make an offer.
Make an offer. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we pay the minimum.
We don't have to, we don't have to give them a minimum. We we don't have to accept any proposals. All right, let that, let's go, let's try, let's try Plan B if Plan A doesn't work out.
I think we should try without a commission before. I agree. I mean, that's.
I just learned that this, that this.
Oh, no, wait, the real- real.
So so here's the thing, the commission is is probably well worth it when you consider that there might be somebody.
Not even in the area.
Not in the area who who peruses the MLS. And or sees it in Zillow. I mean, you know, it's it's. You know.
Next. Oh, I I just have a comment associated with the RFP, and and obviously, again, depends on what you wanna do. Typically, there would be, you'd be interested in. To in 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 some sort of way, um. Developing, you know, wh- what you want out of the site. And so either a community visioning or. What? You know, you'd like to see developed there, that would be helpful. Um. So that that may be, you know, that may be a road you don't wanna go.
We don't, I don't wanna go down that road.
I don't really care what goes on on that property, but but I understand what you're saying.
So that's a question.
The land bank doesn't have any money then, right?
To Fox, if we went through you, the you person seemed to think that had funds available.
Yeah, he he said that he was.
Cause that kicks us back, okay, that one's kinda.
I am more in favor of listing it, just because I think in in that manner, we actually have someone who is actively marketing this property. If we just put it out for bid, we may get one bid, we may get a couple. But as a listing agent, they they are marketing it, they are finding the best purchasers for the property who are willing to offer. Uh top dollar rather than just going the bid process and we get one or two people.
Yeah, I think listing, I think that's starting with the price.
I can throw it that, cause we just sold a couple pieces of property for beta. So that was all.
And maybe we can.
Price on the listings.
And maybe we can negotiate a commission with uh if we list with a with a former Realtor who was a member, this place I took.
Yeah, but isn't 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 listing that even sort of preferential? Isn't that? How would we decide that?
Just do, there there's, there's plenty of.
Do an RFQ real quick, have have uh give a couple of weeks for Realtors to to put their their credits in, say, hey, this is my marketing plan. Yeah, I mean, it's.
That's what you're concerned.
Maybe they'd have picked one to use, Joe.
It was recommended from administration.
Okay. Okay, so that's how that was done. I I don't think there's any burden of having to, I mean, you could do that, obviously.
Yeah, I don't think anyone requires us to solicit, so this board can decide as a body as to.
Let's put it this way, uh you know, it, you could get, you could get somebody who's got uh a nice marketing plan, they say, hey, you know, I'm willing to do it. The total, total cost of five percent or six percent or whatever. And and basically look at it, and the bottom line is, if you get it on the MLS, for the most part, something like this, I'm thinking. Unless there's incredible marketing plan. Once it's on the MLS, that's the sales tool there, you know. Uh, there are people, though, who do know buyers and they know how to reach out to buyers too.
And that's my, and that's, I mean, I I guess marketing plan makes sense to me if that is the direction.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't, you know, if if I were not here, I wouldn't even entertain it because I know there'd be people who'd be better than.
Isn't it, doesn't, to me, it appears more transparent.
I think so.
It does, I I think so, I I it's it's.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah. So, so. I guess the first decision would be uh whether list versus bid. Uh, and then the second decision would be uh depending upon how this board proceeds. Uh how to bid or list, so let's uh.
You're you don't think we could get a a couple of bids, a couple of offers, then we could consider, if they're not acceptable to us, then we could listen to.
We can do the reverse too. If we are not happy with the listing process, we can.
Well, the bids, the bid, the bid process, they're gonna come in, if you list it, they're gonna come in and then we're gonna be paying the commission. I mean, I I I get what he's saying.
I, no, I understand the commission.
So so so, you know, again. I'm just telling you, you you expand your.
Yeah.
Your uh, yours, your marketing area by a million. You know, I mean, with with an MLS listing.
So let's just, uh let's just vote on that. Who wants to make a motion?
I'll make a motion, I will list. The property in Kingsley, the, I don't wanna call it excess property.
The old garage.
The old garage, that we list the old garage and that we take it, what do you call it?
Uh, or uh, request for qualifications and and.
Okay, there's a motion uh to list the thing, all Kingsley garage. Uh, and request and have a request for qualifications from the listing agents.
From potential.
Potential listing agents, okay? Is there support for that motion?
I'll support it.
So support from uh Gilman, uh uh Commissioner Gilman, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Underwood?
Yes.
Gilman?
Yes.
Corn?
No.
Lehman?
Yes and no.
Which one is it?
Oh, my gosh.
Yes, because they don't have to, we don't have to agree to take that.
Okay, yes, yes.
Well, this, this is a good process, and we're gonna get out of this thing now, we're gonna get out of it, right?
Yeah, we 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 don't have.
We're not obligated to anybody, we're we're gonna be completely transparent in our deal to sell.
Everything will be in an open meeting. And and the board will have a full opportunity to evaluate the qualifications of the people and receive the prices. The offers they bring, we don't have to accept it.
No, and if somebody from Kingsley wants to come and. Speak to us about what would be best with their community, for their community, we don't have to accept that, but we could listen to that.
I'm assuming it's on industrial. Is that?
Um, no, actually, I don't. I don't know what it's on.
So probably.
I mean, it's still a subcommittee to review their RFQ, though, in the past.
That sounds boring.
Yeah, I I think I think we are, we are a small enough board that the, that we can review those unless unless anyone has us.
I am actually think, I'm actually thinking that the the management can bring us the the.
Yeah.
The offers, uh.
Yeah.
And if you have a recommendation, obviously, you can.
I think you can, you can do it. I'm not gonna form a subcommittee here.
I have zero qualification.
Yeah, so you review, staff can review it, bring the offers and. And we'll pick a listing.
And if you have any questions.
Look, that's wrong, Max, it'd be nice to go through land bank, but that's a whole separate hoops of.
Yeah.
Sure.
Money.
Right. But it just, it really, it may, it comes down to how involved you wanna be in the redevelopment of that. The the great news is that we can be involved still.
Right.
When it comes to identification of a buyer for the property.
Yes.
Helping them, you know, and to kind of answer that question before, that's where that due diligence period comes comes in when you, when you do a contract. And really, the only liability is that, you know, if the environmental is. So bad that they won't wanna go through with the purchase.
Yes.
Then now you know what it is.
Then we know, right?
Yeah.
We may be a bit more realistic in our, yeah, absolutely. Yeah. No, I really appreciate that, and thank you for being here and sitting around these days. Okay, item N is our holiday. And slash board meeting scheduled preview. I don't think so, unless.
We meet again and.
I think we didn't vote on it because Commissioner Paul isn't here.
We weren't gonna meet for the end of January.
Last year, we did a special meeting at the beginning of January, and I'm just gonna throw out there that I think it might be appropriate this year.
I I I agree with you because I was kind of surprised that they actually went towards the, almost towards the end of January.
Let's have an early.
Originally, when there was a new commissioner.
Well, there's more.
There's more to it than that.
So we have, the second is a Thursday. I don't know. Let's see.
Oh, my God, no. I don't do eight AM meetings.
Let's not suit that either, okay?
The ninth, the ninth, the ninth at six PM.
Yeah, right, nine.
So do we need to do like organizational at five thirty, though, and then?
How do you do org first and then special?
Special meeting?
Do we have a special meeting? We can just.
Well, maybe we'll have.
Yeah, we can just have an organizational meeting.
And if we have to throw something in it, we just throw something in it.
I thought you come into action items at organizational meetings, you had to follow that.
I know, but my point is, we don't have to have a special meeting, we can just have an organizational meeting and be done.
But I'm thinking there might be something that.
Ah, you're.
Then we add the special meeting.
Might have.
I feel more comfortable if we have a special meeting scheduled for that day and it's on the books and ahead of time and.
Okay, yeah, I I I agree, I agree, actually, cause we could always just not have.
We can always just not have.
We could do six and six thirty.
Yeah, I don't care about that. I just wanna make sure that we put it on the calendar under the way that.
And if we really have it, then we have two.
Okay, so do you not want the org at five thirty?
Um, how about the organizational meeting at six, okay, and a special meeting at six thirty? Just in case, then we have the ability to cancel that if we don't want it, and just do the org.
Perfect.
Because otherwise, we don't, and then two weeks later, we would have our, we'll bring it. Okay, I think that would be appropriate, considering the circumstances.
Sure. Sounds good. So Kylie, you will um. We can, we can adopt this meeting schedule today, subject to the change.
Yeah.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I made that motion.
You did?
Yeah.
That's important.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Corn uh to approve the twenty twenty five regular meeting schedule. With the change for a organizational meeting and a special meeting on January nine. Beginning at six PM for the organizational meeting and six thirty for the special meeting and support by Commissioner Gilman. Um, if there is no other dis- uh discussion on this topic, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
So are you including Halliday in there?
I'm sorry.
And that includes holidays too.
What is holiday?
Yeah, I did, I, yeah, yeah, I mean.
We can make a special on holidays.
What does that mean?
Holiday schedule at the bar.
So you would mention at one of the meetings.
Oh, no, this is how you do that change? This is it? Like the holiday on there, we're adopting.
Would be our holidays.
That means the pay time off for the, for the employees.
Yeah, this is recognized.
What do you wanna?
We don't have Veterans Day off here. We have a lot of veterans and I think it's weird and I think.
Then we're done.
With the question mark.
So that's what I wanted to do. I'm sorry, I thought this was just a courtesy.
Just do a quick vote for amend, so.
Yeah, so I made the motion and I'm gonna amend it to approve the.
Well, it is a separate vote, just add, just to amend the schedule, yeah, just just do a motion to amend the schedule, include Veterans Day.
Okay, so there's a motion by Commissioner Corn uh to amend the holiday schedule. Uh to include veterans.
We don't have that budget. Bargaining.
Oh, oh.
Right, this was the first step we had to do in order for you to find out what it entitled, right? I thought that's what we had talked about, now. Okay.
Oh.
Yeah, so this would be to keep, to close the office, and then I thought that we had to do that so that. There would be something for the union negotiations.
Think we can take that to the union at any point in time, whoever understands it.
So we have until November eleventh, is twenty twenty five for us to figure out whether the union will agree, correct?
It's November.
November, right? Yeah, no, I think I think that's kind of just a formality.
Yeah, that's what I thought. We had to do this action and then you guys could do like a letter of understanding that the board isn't involved. Okay.
With the union.
All right, there's just, there's kind of multiple conversations going on and I I and so, so uh there is the issue of the union. And then there's the issue of the budget. So the union, we have figured out that that was just for, that is something that the, that you will approach them and.
I would like more direction to.
Okay, we can do that. And what about the budget part of it?
That'll affect, impact our fringe rate, because we're. Putting more pay into our fringe bucket and spreading it out over fewer working hours, so, you know. Impact that, and it costs us currently about twelve thousand dollars a day. For our holidays, I just look at what we just paid.
Over and above. Over and above?
Uh, well. Depends on if we're bringing, bringing people in to make up the difference. Or they're not getting as much work done or.
So then we, we need another, we would, as one motion, we would also need. Uh to authorize you to do a budget amendment for twenty twenty five, now that we just adopted the twenty twenty five budget.
It would, it would be shifting between activities.
So you don't need an amendment?
You can bring an amendment to us at any time before it happens. We, but we're obligating the money for it, if you really wanna do this. We're not, we're not paving, we're giving guys another day off.
Right, so the the do you need a motion for that, to authorize? The appropriation of funding for that.
We're not even that, that, I mean.
Okay, all right.
So we do need something for him. And the union?
Yes. We we, there was a motion on the floor, but uh.
Yeah, you may wanna.
But you may wanna amend it to authorize.
And authorize.
And authorize the board manager to negotiate with the union.
That sounds good, I think.
That 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 actually seems, that that's appropriate.
Will you, are you?
Agree to the.
Okay, so the amended motion is to uh. Approve the holiday schedule with the inclusion of Veterans Day. And direct road manager to negotiate with the unions regarding Veterans Day. That is the motion from Commissioner Corn, supported by Commissioner Underwood. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Informational items, managers' comments.
Um, and we have one more meeting left in this year, one to certainly have the discussions, Jason talked about, maybe something at the next meeting or wanna do this one. Usually this time of year, we start talking about raises for the staff uh in the past, or does authorize up to a percentage of overall payroll. Um, for raises for the year for admin. Union's already negotiated. Two more years on that contract, so it'll just be for admin staff.
Do we normally mirror the adjustment in the union contract for admin or is that not?
It it hasn't followed in the past. It's usually.
And we're currently doing a wage study too.
We are doing a wage study currently that that should be coming.
What is the timeline for when it's normally approved?
Uh, it's usually before the end of the year.
Okay, that's what I thought I remembered.
True. But do you have any recommendations for the board?
Um. I mean, just spitballing, but nothing I've I've looked, any research to back it up right now.
We have next week. Will you? Well, yeah.
Well, I can put something together. I just wanted to get the conversation going and.
But we only have, like you said, one more meeting.
Yes, it's not gonna surprise to us next week. This is, yeah.
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 So understood.
But he but next week. You would expect us to make a decision.
Next, we gotta ask for a decision of a.
Right.
Overall percentage.
Right, so between now and next Thursday, you would need to do some research and make some recommendation.
Do you have any of that baked into your next year's budget?
I can put some in my budget. All right. So because I wasn't exactly sure where the wage studies were.
The.
But this is the other thing, the wage studies probably won't make it back by first of the year, otherwise I would try to incorporate those same time for goals to make it, but. It's it's possibly could. I don't foresee it there.
So. We the wage study won't be done before the first of the year. But we have commissioned a wage study. Whose results we won't see until after we have made the decision to. Be a raises. We can make a we can to make a retroactive after we've seen the weight weight stuff. I'm not I'm not I'm not comfortable doing that.
I'm the uh. Well, for me, I'm not I'm not an entire, I'm not entirely beholden to wage studies anyway, because I've seen some before that just. They 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 take a lot of comparisons from places that don't have any business being compared uh compared to us either, so I. We have to take it. As guidance perhaps, but not as a hard new best.
I don't think the wage study necessarily means we have to give these big raises as it starts to kind of create buckets. And this is kind of ranges of where each job should fall into, you know, slowly over a few years maybe.
Yeah, and and that's my point is I'm not suggesting the wage study that we we wholesale follow their recommendations and adopt them as is. But it is a tool that that actually allows us to have a little bit of an informed decision.
Right.
Rather than just kind of like picking a random number and saying, okay, this sounds good.
But if you're gonna do it now, we're gonna just pick a random. We might look at CPI, we might look at CPI, for example.
Two point five percent, yeah.
And then that's what they're getting, but that's also negotiating with other with other things too.
This year across the different public agencies.
And and maybe that is what we have to do. Uh, the thing is that when we have we approve wage studies, we should at least make use of them because we are spending money on us. You may not have, but in the end, I so I I. I I'm not, I I I hate spending money and then just putting something on the shelf because. You know, um, but it looks like that we don't have an option. So, okay, the other question I had is we already issued a notice. Or did we not issue the notice for next for the special meeting? And we've only had the topic of road managers' compensation terms. So do we have to amend that notice to include this? Because we are limited.
I mean, yeah.
Yeah, we are limited to what we can discuss in a special meeting based on.
Well, the next meeting isn't a special meeting.
The next thing is our regular.
No, this is our regular. Yes, the next meeting is our special.
Did we do that?
Yeah.
All right.
All right, so.
So confused.
So we would have to just make sure that the notice, uh, is there anything else you want added for the next meeting? Because we just wanted to the notice once.
Not now, because of the staff.
Okay. Anything that the board would want to add to the special meeting?
I'm just wondering if there's anything we can think of that needed to be done before the end of the year. That's the only thing I'm just trying to.
Well, if we are amending the notice, uh, I would like to have a discussion on our purdean policy changes to that.
Oh, good idea.
That's a good idea.
So just hypothetically, this Arnold Road thing came back up. It couldn't be placed on it on the special meeting. Is that what I'm hearing?
I don't wanna see it.
Only if I don't wanna speak on the specials, you could, but.
Okay, so that's not something we're gonna need to be prepared for and be. Okay.
So it's not gonna come back this year.
Okay.
Okay. Any other items for next Thursday? So we have identified three items.
Well, two additional.
Two additional, yeah, total of three.
They're bringing up Lake Road. This is the one we talked about with the people pop the forty eight years.
Yeah.
And.
Oh, yeah, we have to, but we don't have to have a public hearing on it because it was signed by all the owners, right?
There's only one owner.
Yeah. But we have to have a decision within twenty days. Do we need a waiver?
I can I can ask.
Because because when does the twenty days expire? Do you know?
We have the sixth of.
Is it twenty or twenty six?
Twenty days, so twenty six days.
So it will be Monday, the the twentieth sixteen, okay. If you could, I think we got a similar waiver. I think they would be, if you could request a waiver.
So where where are we waiting?
So. This has been a term of an interesting situation where we started to look into it. I think I talked about we are currently snow plowing it through there, but it's a seasonal road. But the reason we're plowing through there on a seasonal road is because the way it connects us to our over, it turns into a grid pattern.
So that the plow guy can.
If we stop doing that, there's several residents that live on this and it would become a spiraling situation. A road with residents living on that road. We stopped plowing where the season starts. Can. We could make improvements to go straight, but now we're probably looking at forty thousand dollars. At our own cost, or you, we can make a recommendation that the gentleman wants us to move that over, that we would expect him to pay the cost, so moving over there. Legal counsel does state that, that we were right by user, since the fifties that that road has been there. That we legally were in a good situation. If we move it over, now people had to land over there. We're moving back into it right away. He said that opens us up for.
Right.
What?
And what? They have a better case than right now.
And what would it be to put a. A circle at the ends of the plow can just turn around or that's hundred and fifteen feet, right? Roughly, isn't that what what we need?
We did kind of roughly look at a place to do that. We don't think it's a huge, the government lost properties, said we could use all that gravel. It was already there existing.
Okay.
But the problem that comes that is a seasonal road, more than a roundabout would go up about a mile, I would say.
It's about a half mile between where.
So we would see a shopping stub road, which we don't like to do stub roads, but we have to turn around.
And then we'd have that little seasonal stub.
We have a weird little section.
So this was, we're talking about uh that um. The original lake road, which was a section line, correct? And and it's.
Was migrated off to the side because.
Right. So right now, we do we plow that entire section?
We plow an entire section of seasonal because it's actually better for us the way, because otherwise you have to go all the way out and around to get over to, what road is that?
Cedar Road, C A or Cedar uh Cedar Creek.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the the one that is being trapped that they want to abandon. I'm talking about the one that goes straight, the originally developed road. Do we plow that?
That's unplowable.
That's unplowed.
It goes, okay, it's it's like a hard hill. I mean.
Yeah, it goes. So you're saying that right now we plow on either side of that?
Right now, we're using that as a cut through, so we don't have to drive out of our way to come back around to another road.
Great, okay.
Yeah, section. So now, I mean, it'll add more time to staff and it'll take us out of a grid pattern of plowing.
And I will note that Union Township. Indicated that they are in favor.
They're totally in favor, yeah, which we could do that if we stop plowing that. There's a few residents that have been plowed. Forever, that would sound.
Can we, can I ask, do we typically earn the practice of plowing seasonal roads?
We are not. There's a few roads around the county that we do that are a benefit to us to plow them.
Yeah.
And what, how do we determine that it's a benefit to us to plow them?
If it gets us in a grid pattern up straight through versus and it saves us time versus having to drive a long ways around out of the way.
So once that section is abandoned, would that benefit remain?
No. Gotta go around. We have to go around and much we improve the road to a degree that we could.
So then we.
Or do the roundabout, then we take that on as a local road.
Right, uh, 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 outside of that, it would no longer meet that criteria, but obviously then the people who live on that road would be.
No longer at service there.
And they're used to service, that's.
And and I have one, I have one of these. I own a piece of property that I've been thinking of petitioning the road commission, which I haven't. Since I joined on, I asked the manager, Phil was maybe there at the right away. I have one of these where the road veers into. A big piece of property I own and I own the property on both sides.
Mm hmm.
And it's veered in a spot where it makes it very inconvenient for me. And I would like it to be moved back to the section line where it belongs. So if we're gonna always do that, then. Of course, if you set the policy to do this, then I would want you to do it.
And that's why I, I I think that's my concern. It's like I I completely understand that the. That the reaction that the property owners are gonna have because we have been doing it. And that's the downside of that is that if that was a policy that we only plow seasonal roads as they're a benefit to us. But I think we're gonna keep running into this situation is that at some point the benefit ends, but the people have gotten accustomed to it. So then why even have that rule? Because it's never gonna work in our favor. That's I I don't know, I don't know how that root rule developed, but clearly it's not to our benefit in the end. Uh, what's the board's pleasure? I guess um, uh, what does the? I mean, we don't have to decide, but clearly this is going, we, first of all, we have to have this at the, you're saying at the next. Uh, December nineteen meeting. Okay, so at that then.
We need to have a plan for the.
But we need to have a recommendations as to what you're recommending for that because uh between now and then.
So this person committed a petition though, right? And then that's and and then the date that he submitted is the next twenty day. Okay, I understand.
And that's gonna go right against what we were talking about an hour and a half.
Because Union Township.
When Commissioner Corn's comment about not voting. And I don't either. I have one hundred percent.
Know their township and they know who will.
I'm not gonna do that, otherwise.
I think we need to, I need, I think we need to extend, uh, see if we can't get an extension for the twenty days to start with, because I don't think we're ready to make a decision on this yet.
I'd like to talk to the township supervisor and inform them that residents would.
Might be cut up.
Yeah.
Yeah, me, I think I think uh I think Jason's uh is a good point. We maybe we don't wanna rush into it in within a week. Maybe let's, it loo- looks like that this was not discussed at that meeting when when uh. The township supervisor was here.
I think I made a comment. I said we would need to look at that flower out and.
I know, but but look at it, but now we have to have a more in-depth conversation as to what that's gonna.
Now you might say, we might have to have.
Yeah. So and you may wanna talk to the petitioner and when you're asking for extension that. We, these discussions are helpful and actually they're at particular, so they may not wanna rush. But the way things are right now, the union, you know.
Also, I'm just gonna tell you, my question's gonna be ahead of time, so you can prepare for it. I'm not asking for a specific number, but just can we have a rough idea of. How many seasonal roads we're plowing because of the, oh, Larry knows.
It's approximately, it's probably seventy miles.
Seven to eight mile.
And and would you say that those miles, they have people living? Right? Like we are talking about, okay, so pretty much every road that we're plowing that's seasonal. In this situation has at least one homeowner that's benefiting from.
I I wanna look, I won't say every, but I'm just saying sometimes we'll we'll cut through it so that it's a shorter distance.
Right, oh, for sure.
But over the years, we know we're going through there, so we improved that section because we don't wanna. People see that, they say, hey, this might be a seasonal road, but it's a nice road.
And what was that one road that came out like a year and a half ago where we were doing that and all of a sudden they wanted it widened and and. Sparked, right? I mean, that's how it started.
They wanted us to continue.
Yeah.
Somebody moved the the seasonal road back.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause I think uh it would be, it's important to know that this road, if we were to make whatever decision we make. There are homeowners in the same situation on other seasonal roads that could feel slighted or else maybe not, I mean, whatever, but. There are other people in that situation.
Okay, so I think we're gonna hold off on. Adding that to the special meeting pending your discussions. And uh uh getting an extension. And I'm not talking about an extension from mu- from the sixteen to the nineteen.
So not our special meeting, but oh, our special meeting?
Any other comments, Ken?
I think that's good.
Very important, though. We gotta wrap up the year.
Yeah.
And now.
Commissioner's comments.
You wanna look at these bid things that I presented very quickly?
Yes.
These are very readily available off the F F dot website. Start, find number twelve. It says letting of December sixth, twenty twenty four. Number twelve, um, six million dollars worth of paving, three qualified bidders, twenty seven percent under the engineer's estimate. That's what happens when you have competition in your market. We talked about it. I just wanna thank you.
You are, okay. Which which area is this from, Alan?
Uh, where did it say? Uh, I'm dealer.
Oh, dealer, wow.
Wow, what is no D B E?
That means sometimes you have to have disadvantaged business enterprises participate in your project. They want a minority inclusion.
Okay.
And certain types of work, there's minority contractor.
So I do know what that is.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
All right.
It's not a situation for grand traffic now.
Uh, sometimes it's in, oh, it probably is in ours.
We had someone down in Park this year.
Okay.
Roundabout had in here, I think roundabout did as well.
Yeah.
Sometimes this, there's there's some state rules about it. Uh, number thirteen on the back i- is 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 nothing I had to, I think it was a bridge job. Um, or whatever with number eleven, number thirteen. Look at the number of bidders.
Yeah.
And again, ten percent under the engineer's estimate.
City of Lansing.
Lansing.
And that's gotta be an expensive place to do business. You know, there there it's when you're in a traffic.
Yeah.
And in in difficult situations, that's, again, it's I I would say this, this is the number of bidders. Or the type of projects. Then on the flip side is letting call number fourteen. And uh.
Five point three percent.
Five point three, and they'll probably accept that because they always accept them when they're within ten. But but it's under bid review for uh something, unbalanced bid review.
Even Benzy County got so much.
Uh, I don't wanna jump. So now, I will say that Elmers will still probably do the paving on this project. Reeve Riley will, because Reeve Riley paves for. J N N, which is Alan McQuestion from Leroy. So because there's a lot, my point to the board and. Is because there's a lot of other type work in this, than just paving, that you've just gotta hire the only paving guy there is. Um, people are interested in it.
Yeah.
Because there's other type of work that they do. J N N is probably has a paving rating, but probably would not. Pay this. They, you have to. Uh, it's, it it doesn't matter for our sake, but again, it's it's only five percent over, probably because there's three bidders and somebody. Besides our primary contractor got it. And then there was uh number thirty seven from Benzy County.
I I'm surprised, five?
Five people want this job because it's it's guard rail and bridge abutment removal. My point on this is sometimes we're gonna, let's say, previously on Townline Road, we're gonna bid that as a package. We're gonna put in this culvert. Culvert we have approved, which costs a half a million dollars, and then we were gonna pave it, maybe. If we bid the culvert remover separate. There might be five or six people who are really good at that, really efficient, and they'll bid that, and then we let the paving. As a separate item, something for. Instead of having them reap the the subcontractor. Because because cuz they they're gonna want, if they, if they're not efficient at it, or if they use a subcontractor.
Yep.
They want of margin on. And and if, let's say, John Henry Excavating had some paving on it, on this thing award in Benzy County. Um, they would, they would have had to, because you just can't work for free, they would have had to maybe mark up. The paving on it, so if you, because they, you know, they got a subcontractor they're responsible for, and so if they're. Yeah, this is. They're from Gaylor, they're the people we didn't, but they're the people we didn't let build our roundabouts.
Okay, that was creamy, so I I I don't think everyone would be in.
They all came to the meeting. You didn't take our low bid, we're, we might not come back.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, they just did uh Veterans Drive for the city of Traverse City.
Oh, they did, okay.
I think Elvis or Reeve Riley still did the paving, they they don't paint. But there was a lot of other workouts, or if we have stuff that's outside of. Normal go down the road paving, if we have a chance to design our projects, well.
If if our engineering can a la carte some of this stuff, I think, I mean, maybe that's, that might be. Partly a a solution, get us a little more bang for the buck.
The other thing you 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 guys talked about is maybe bundling, you can save when you get. Like the 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 nine million dollar deal in our county, there was three bidders because it was nine million dollars.
Yeah.
Even even if the paving is half of it. Maybe the paving on that part of it is four and a half million dollars, maybe there's still four and a half million dollars that some other contractor really wants. And they, and they have to be over fifty percent of the contract in order to bid it as a primary construction. So in this case, J N N has to. Fifty percent plus a little, you know what the little is there? For to being a primary contractor on it.
I thought it was thirty five percent, but I could be wrong.
You have to, some of this has to be your work, you can't. So my my, my point is that they were. Um, there there is other work in some jobs that we could, if they were the, like like a culvert replacement, we. Any qualified excavator could put in that box culvert, and we could patch over it. And even if we didn't have the money to do the whole road, the 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 whatever little patching is gonna be there is not gonna be significant. And we could do the paving some other time, I mean, if it was important that we got this permit for the box culvert and we have to, we should put it in at some point. It just lets that by itself. This is, this is a reason why. You can't, you can't elect this board, I'm sorry, I mean, you you're not gonna elect. You you could, but it's it's unlikely you're gonna get this makeup of this board, I'm sorry, I've seen evidence from everybody on this board tonight except for me.
That is not true.
The 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 rules, that's, but. That a lot of this stuff is just, okay, we'd like to be the best we can with the public's money, and I brought it to your attention.
I appreciate it.
It's it's on the state's website, it's just being it, you know, it just wakes it back up again. The the reason I said it's under unbalanced bid review is sometimes they don't like the numbers put on people and the same number, cuz they found something like. They found an in, they found a bad plot in the thing and they think. They only allowed that much for that, but we know that we're gonna run up the bill to double that, and and that's a, the state looks for that kind of stuff, but uh. There is. There's a temporary traffic light on here, so we'll see how much it costs to put up a temporary traffic light. And if we have, because it's gonna be bid as an item on this thing, it's just not available yet because. They haven't released the in the individual bid items because it hasn't been. Go, hasn't gone out for a war. So there'll be some things that we'll say, okay, here's really what it costs in our county, it wasn't anything we did, cuz we haven't. Been a temper, but but when somebody says, could we put in a temporary traffic light, well, no, here's how much a temp- temporary traffic light costs. It's it's interesting to look at the bid tab items for stuff when we regularly don't do it.
So you did this in your spare time, like at home at night, like you proved proved the M dot. I love that, we need a board member that does that, cuz I'm not gonna.
Pretty lame, but.
You you know, we all have our things, Alan.
It's also why I can't be a political board.
Yeah.
Respect.
That's very informative. I'll accept it, yeah, I think we.
Wait a minute, what about the public comment? Anyone on Zoom?
Okay.